Folks, before I begin the meeting, just a little bit of housekeeping. Restrooms are of course are right here on the right. Feel free to go up at any time. If you're here for one particular item, after that item's done, don't feel the need to wait for the whole meeting. You can leave right after that. Finally, I'm going to move up. There was two requests to move up agenda items. So I'm, I guess the quickest way to say this is I will put the short-term rental regulations last on the agenda. Other than that, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Mayor Karspik.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Hardy.
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht.
Here.
Trustee Wing.
Present.
Trustee Brody.
Here.
Trustee Ayers will be absent this evening.
Thank you, clerk. Next on our agenda is citizen participation. This is a chance for folks in the audience to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda. We have no one signed up?
Oh, sorry. Let's just sign.
Is this, okay. Well, you know what you're doing, being a previous trustee, so. I know who you are. Please, Mr. Lack, if you could state your name and address.
Brian Lack, 606 Second Street, right here in town. Main Street and Second Street. Thank you very much, Tom, for treating all of our trees on Second Street. I know some of those ash trees don't like conform to what's supposed to be treated, but they're the only trees we got down there. And all of us businesses on Second Street really appreciate it. And the same thing on Main Street, all the flower buckets or whatever you call it, vases, it all looks so dialed in, it looks great. So big compliments to staff for taking care of that stuff. It must be a little frustrating for staff sometimes to like beautify our downtown and then there's, there's always one. And there's one guy with like these tall weeds right on Main Street across from the vat and across from like Maggi Real Estate. It looks like no one lives there, like it's an empty building, but I just, I don't know like how to put it on people's radar screens, but for the guys that are making our downtown look so beautiful, somebody should talk to that property owner and ask them to, they're like this tall.
Okay.
And on Second Street, I'm curious, I don't know if anybody went to the B-Rad Hot Rod Show. It's pretty awesome on Second Street. And I'm a motorhead, so I love that kind of stuff. But I had no idea it was happening. And this is like the third time, third time in a row that my neighbors and I had no idea that Saturday they were going to close the road and have their hot rod show. And I gotta work on Saturdays sometimes, and on that particular day I did. And I've met the guy that let me in begrudgingly was like, I said, dude, I, I gotta go to work, you gotta let me through here. And he begrudgingly let me in. I said, you gotta give me heads up if you're gonna close off this road, because me and my neighbors, we are here on Saturdays. So I guess my question is, what is the process for notifying people? He said he knocked on my shop door, which seems wildly inadequate. It seems like, like when the parade people, they leave a notice on your door, hey, we're having a parade, which is very pro. And then you know, and you can plan accordingly. So I wonder when B-Rad has his next hot rod show, which is awesome. What, like, is it gonna be the same? Like, just, or is there a process that's not being fully worked through? I wonder if somebody can answer that for me.
Certainly. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Administrator Kirk, could you speak to the, Mr. Lack, if you could follow up with that particular business address, maybe we could look into that? Residential? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Our, we can have our code enforcement team go out and cruise Main Street, shouldn't be that hard to find if the weeds are three feet tall. They may, they may have already identified it anyway.
Okay. As far as noticing for road closures, how does that work?
We don't require notice of road closures, I don't believe, ahead of events. Typically, a road closure wouldn't block access to, there should be an alternative access to any of the businesses or residences that might be affected by road closures. So there may have been something missing there, but that's certainly something we can work on.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
And just one other add with respect to code enforcement or any other issues that we have in town, right on our homepage, on the kind of the main banner at the bottom of the screen, it says, "Report a Concern." Anytime you see something, anyone in town can go to that Berthold Report a Concern link, it's right on, like, like I said, it's right on our main page of our website. Those get logged into a GIS system that it's geolocated if you put an address in, so we can go find it. It'll send emails and then we can respond back to you through that system as well. So that's always available if, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's a Report a Concern card up there, too. I actually hand those out because, no, I'm sorry, on that table behind you.
Oh, okay.
I hand those out a lot because they actually, the staff does respond to folks and you can introduce pictures and all that. Thank you, Mr.
Okay, so I guess it'll be the same next year. They're gonna have the event and I'm not gonna know about it.
We didn't say that.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not what I said.
Administrator Kirk's gonna look into that and.
Oh, cool. Because there's, when they cut it off, there's no alternative access.
Ah, okay. Yep, that's great, nothing.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Okay, with no one else signed up, we can move now into consent. I would just like to bring up that the Broad Meadow Annexation has been completely withdrawn. So the application has been completely withdrawn. So though that's on our notice for consent, that's actually, should not be in consent anymore. So do trustees, would they like anything removed from consent?
I would like item E removed.
Okay, item E, anything else?
Yeah, item G.
Item G, okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve consent minus items E, G, and with the exception to item D?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus E, minus G, and with the deletion of D.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
All right, trustee Wing has moved on consent, trustee Hardy has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Mayor Karspik?
Yes. Items removed from consent will be considered next. So we'll start off with House of Navalny Service Utility Assistance Funding Request. Trustee Albrecht.
I just wanted to bring this one just to the forefront real quick because it caught my attention that we're seeing such an influx and need to help residents with their utility bills. For House of Navalny Services to ask us for an additional $10,000 to assist with emergency needs for utility bills, to me tells me that we have a critical need in our community. And I just want it to be on a radar and for, for us to be aware of, of the growing need that we have. And I also wanted to ask staff if we have a continued plan for addressing the funding needs for these once the American Rescue Plan funds run out. Are we just planning on budgeting for this or is it going to be an annual request type of situation? Do we, have we thought about how to continue to address this need?
I think that's up to the board. We won't be using the American Rescue Plan Act funds if you authorize these, we'll incorporate this into our utility fund account as an expenditure. So we can continue to do that moving forward as needed and as approved by the board.
I mentioned one time on this, putting a donate button to help others. You said that'd probably be something doable, did you ever?
We, yes, we, we could do that.
So there's a request for funding, I was curious why this was a consent item.
I can bring up, I can speak to that. Just with the length of the meeting agenda tonight, we talked this over and, yeah, I know, putting things under consent generally, you want things out there, but I just thought with the length of things that if we wanted to pull it, we could, but.
Well, is there an assumption that we would like, like it would be approved? I, I'm just.
Right, with consent, there is kind of a, that there's not much conflict with it, but if, certainly speak to what you need. Administrator Kirk?
The other reason, so typically we think of consent as routine or non-controversial.
my attention that we're seeing such an influx and need to help residents with their utility bills. For House of Navalny Services to ask us for an additional $10,000 to assist with emergency needs for utility bills, to me tells me that we have a critical need in our community. And I just want it to be on a radar and for, for us to be aware of, of the growing need that we have. And I also wanted to ask staff if we have a continued plan for addressing the funding needs for these once the American Rescue Plan funds run out. Are we just planning on budgeting for this or is it gonna be an annual request type of situation? Do we, have we thought about how to continue to address this need?
I think that's up to the board. We won't be using the American Rescue Plan Act funds. If you authorize these, we'll incorporate this into our utility fund account as an expenditure. So we can continue to do that moving forward as needed and as approved by the board.
I mentioned one time on this, putting a donate button to help others. You said that'd probably be something doable. Did you ever?
We, yes, we, we could do that.
So, so there's a request for funding. I was curious why this is a consent item.
I can bring up, I can speak to that. Just with the length of the meeting agenda tonight, we talked this over and, yeah, I know, putting things under consent generally, you want things out there, but I just thought with the length of things that if we wanted to pull it, we could, but...
Well, is there an assumption that we would, like, like it would be approved? I, I'm just...
Right, with consent, there is kind of a, that there's not much conflict with it, but if, certainly speak to what you need. Administrator Kirk?
The other reason, so typically, we think of consent as routine or non-controversial. In this case, this is the third time that the board would be approving funding. So the board's already authorized funding for this program twice before, so it seemed to be us to be routine and non-controversial in that way. Certainly, anytime you guys want to take something off consent and ask questions, that's the right thing to do.
Is it for 2025?
It would be, we would authorize the funds this year and they would use it until it ran out. So the first time we authorized funding, they didn't have to come back and ask for additional funds for two and a half or three years.
Was it budgeted?
This particular amount of money, no. This will be added to the mid-year budget adjustment in August if, if you approve that tonight.
And I did want to mention that I commend you guys for stepping up urgently instead of waiting until the next budget year to approve additional funds because the need and demand is present. And so thank you for bringing that before us and making sure that they're getting those resources urgently and not delaying. I am really grateful, since we already have approved this in the past. One, one thing I wanted to bring up regarding the utility funds and that, and all of that is based on a personal story, just wanted to share with you guys really quick because I thought about it, once thinking that there's such effort in our community. When I was going through a rough time with my family and we had a utility shut-off notice, it came on, I think, a Wednesday, and we had until Thursday to get the fund, to get it paid before it was shut off for three days, 'cause town does not work Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And so it was a scramble to get the bill paid in one day's time before we had three days and four kids without utilities in the home. So I don't know what the current model is that you guys are using, but when I did talk to the staff that was working at the time, they said that was the standard approach. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as a personal story of what happens to someone who's in that struggle place and how to help them and maybe putting it at the beginning of the week that notice, they have time, or giving them more time to respond, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And does the House Navalny Services give you a specific detailed?
They give us a break.
Or is it just a lump sum we give them?
They ask for a lump sum and they did the last two times because they, they distribute it based on need. They qualify folks based on a variety of criteria that was outlined in our original agreement. And, and they offer those funds and then it's not the same amount all the time. So they just ask for lump sum and we work through that, based on that criteria, and then they come back and ask for more when it's, when that bank account is depleted.
Would it be asking too much if I just at least ask for, when they've used the funds, could they just give us an accounting of how?
Oh, of course, yeah.
And is it?
That's a reasonable thing to think.
Is it water, electrical, and gas? Is that what it is?
It is. It's primarily for water, to pay for town utilities.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I just second Tim Hardy's request to put a donate option on people's utility bills so that those who are doing okay can help others? I think we all want to help out once we're doing...
I can bring that up in the reports. Well, if you don't, then I'll remember to bring that up. We've got two people interested, so I'll do that.
That's all I had for that item.
So now that it's off of consent, would we need a motion to approve it?
Correct, if you don't have any, anything else.
Okay.
Trustee, Albrecht, are you?
Yes.
Is that good? Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve, where did I, what's that?
E.
E, is there a motion to approve consent agenda, item E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second?
Go ahead.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Murphy has moved, trustee Albrecht has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Carstback?
Yes. Next item pulled was item G, ordinance 1357, Extension of Wastewater Bond Refunding Authority. Trustee Wing?
Yeah, can I just get a quick explanation of what this emergency ordinance is?
Sure. So if you'll recall, about a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago, which is why we're asking for the reauthorization, the board approved the preliminary official statements and authorized us to refund our 2012 wastewater bonds. There's about $6.25 million left. The refunding will allow us to reduce our annual debt service. We'll pay down the debt with the debt reserve fund because our, our credit rating is better than it was when those bonds were issued. We won't be extending the repayment period, so they'll still be paid off in 2032, and we'll bring down our annual debt service by a little over 100,000. We had a target of 3% net present value savings in, in doing that refunding, but right after you authorized us to do that a year ago, the interest rate market's changed and we haven't been able to hit that target. We think we're, we're there now and we can get that done, but our one-year authorization expired at the end of May, so we need to get that back, that authorization from you again for another year. And assuming that the markets are in a position for us to meet that net present value savings target, then we'll go ahead and, and handle that refunding.
You confused me on one thing. You said it was gonna be refunded and then you said it would go to its maturation date of 2032. I'm a little confused by those two things.
It's like refinancing, right? We're refinancing the debt.
So it's not just paying the people off who own the bond?
That's correct. We're not defusing the debt.
But it's called a refund.
We're not paying it off. Yeah.
Interesting.
But it's, for all intents and purposes, probably easier to just describe it as refinance.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item G?
Motion to approve.
Okay, trustee Wing has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, trustee Brody has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Carstback?
Yes.
Mayor Carstback, if I may, just one note. You guys already voted, but for the public's benefit and maybe for our new trustees, the reason why we do an emergency ordinance in this case is that typically an ordinance is not effective until 30 days after it's approved. That would mean we'd have to wait 30 days in order to take advantage of the market if the market was good tomorrow. And so we were adopting it as an emergency ordinance in order to give the best value to the taxpayer, assuming that we can get those bonds refinanced through this process. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you.
That's why it's an emergency ordinance.
Thank you. All right, thank you for pulling those. Next on our agenda, regular agenda tonight, is a welcome to our new trustee, trustee Mark Brody. Trustee Mark Brody previously served on, as a commissioner on Planning Commission, also serves in a personal life as an executive role, and I can say that I've seen him in many nonprofit benefits in town. So I was particularly impressed as a new trustee that you jumped right in, and I wanted to thank you. Generally, we swear in at a meeting, with trustee Brody's circumstance, we swore him in earlier today, but I just wanted to thank you and if we could all give trustee Brody a round of applause for stepping up.
Welcome.
Nobody can do plenty of years.
Right. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a special guest tonight, Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally. Well, I just appreciate you coming in here and I just wanted to say that your outreach is really good and you've wanted to be here several times, so I'm glad we could finally fit you in. And yeah, thank you for coming all the way down to talk to us.
Thank you, and good evening, board trustees and mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Welcome, trustee Brody, and I'm glad to be here on your first night. I am Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally, and I am thrilled to be here tonight, especially my deep roots in the community. My mom was born and raised on a farm just east of town. I don't think it's there anymore. I think the town's grown over it, but just wait, I'm gonna say the word that makes my mouth water every time, and raise your hand if it makes your mouth water. But come up here almost every other Sunday, we're wayside in to have family dinner after church, and so I still miss that. It was a great family tradition. So deep roots are really glad for the opportunity to be here tonight. I just want, I know we've been trying to do this and I thank the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem for our longstanding relationships. We talk to each other on lots of different areas and I appreciate us facilitating this. And I just wanted to share a little bit with you. I'll just warn you, I love my job, and so I'm gonna speed through this. You have time for questions. I spent two hours with probably two dozen residents in Loveland last week explaining what the county does and what a commissioner does, and I still didn't cover it all. So I'm gonna give you some highlights, but I'm always willing to be on the meeting with any of you and discuss further if you have questions. I left my business cards and some agenda items for you, and so I just wanted to share that a little bit with you. I wanted to also note real quick, appreciate the mayor. It took me 18 months to get Thompson School District to agree to this, but I'm really grateful that the town of Berthard and town manager Kirk and, and mayor come. And we hosted in June our liaison meeting between the town of Berthard, Thompson School District, the city of Loveland, and the county. I really pushed for this because the Pooter School District was doing this every month with the, with the city and county and Pooter School District, and I felt like this is a town of Berthard and Thompson and all of them needed the same love from the county. And now we're doing this quarterly, and I appreciate you guys hosting it here in June. And so I brought the agenda in case you forgot. And so I tend to hold on to documents, which is kind of why my office right now needs me to spend the whole day reorganizing. So I wanted to start with this picture up front here. If any of you aren't familiar with this picture, this is one of our new open spaces that we have purchased in 2023. I'm very glad to be, the commissioner has signed that. This is, used to be, I've got it on my brain, what was the old name? Heaven's Door on the way. This is Highway 34, and the north side is Sylvendale Ranch, Historic Ranch, and then the rest is the 1,600 acres that we have now named Canyon Edge. It's not open yet, yet to the public. It is a major elk migration area and bighorn sheep. This is pre-Alexander Mountain Fire. We're almost on the year anniversary of Alexander Mountain Fire, which would be on the concert, on the hill there up to almost the very top at Sylvendale. And we also own the conservation easement on Sylvendale Ranch, so that view shed is now conserved in perpetuity, which is iconic and just wonderful view shed. We also just closed on another 5,000 acres since January in Livermore. Two, well, actually, several families own ranches on either side of the road up to Livermore and Red Feather Lakes, and that, they have, we now own the conservation easement in partnership with City for Conns and others, and that view shed from ridge to ridge is now protected, if you know Eagles Nest Open Area. But those farmers and those ranches will be there in perpetuity. The land, the water's tied to the land, repairing area is protected, and the problem mouse, endangered problem mouse habitat is protected. So we are on track to, since 2020, have conserved, we're up to almost 61,000 acres from 50,000 acres since I kind of came on board, and that's due to our wonderful staff and partnerships. Some of those relationships take years to, to cultivate, but I wanted to just share with you, our, our partnership with you all is very important to us. We know conservation and protecting elk with spaces of land is important, and I thought I'd start off with this picture because I know we have some strong partnerships there. I'm gonna go on to the next picture. Well, some of the things that I do and really important to me is, to the left is a picture of the bill. I worked with, with the insurance commissioner, who is right behind the governor, and that's Boulder County Commissioner and some Boulder County representatives. Wildfire mitigation is also important for all of us because it impacts your homeowner's insurance. And we just worked on some pieces of bill to help, to help control and hopefully keep people's insurance, whether you live in the town or in unincorporated parts of Laramie County or all Laramie County residents, and this impacts your homeowner's insurance. House Bill 251182 kind of forces some open transparency with insurance companies, with insurance commissioner on their risk modeling and what, why you get the scores you have. And also, if your community or your community or you do wildfire mitigation, it should count towards some discount or towards your homeowner's insurance. So look that up. You have questions, feel free to call me. I did have a town hall with the insurance commissioner who was in the middle back in May, and he'll be coming back in the fall. The other, to the left is, you can see, the right is meeting in wildfire prescribed burn because we need to have beneficial fire on the landscape. And also above that, I serve on the Colorado Forest Health Council, where I serve at the Chair Legislative Committee, and that's appointed by the governor, and that's our 30-year vision for forest health. And why that matters to you all is that where your water comes from, and that's where you rectorate, and you know that's where our air, our air quality, so these matter in a lot of different ways. And so I'd be more than happy to share with you that vision and the work. I'm just also appointed by the governor to the State Emergency Medical and Trauma Services Advisory Board as a commissioner, and I have family have been in emergency, emergency service of 43 years, so very proud to be representing all of you in the county on that. This is my picture, very proud of this picture. I'm, as Mayor Carstback well knows, I worked very hard in 2018 to pass this sales tax to Laramie County voters, voted to tax themselves to take care of each other. Thank you, Laramie County voters for that. This is the day this sculpture was placed in, it's called "The Journey." We've all been one place at one time in this journey. This is a Loveland, actually, they live in Red Feather, but they're studios in Loveland, so local resident and local artist. But this is, we either, we needed a hand up, we give a hand up, or we're lighting the way to healing and hope. And so I wanted to share this with you and share, I know Mayor Carstback is on the Behavioral Policy Council, I chair that along with the Regional Abatement Council, but I wanted to share with you this annual report, because now we've had a year of being open, you all have a copy, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. But it's been a year since Longview, the acute care center has been open. We, I think we're almost 8,000 folks now, 700 a month, and no one's been turned away. 78% of those folks are drive-ups. Think about that. So like I said, emergency services, I know the ERs have seen a little bit of a decrease, but it's still, still in need in our community and with youth. Starting this fall, we can only keep youth now for 23 hours under the age of 17. Starting this fall, we'll be able to keep them longer than that. So important work. Also, I wanted to share with you on this, you can see here, Berthard has received almost a half million dollars in grants. We have the impact grant fund. We're getting ready to announce in a, in a month or so, the awards for that grant, and, and we have given out almost $15 million, it would be over $50 million, and we believe this is why our suicide or overdose rates are decreasing, which has been remarkable, and we are getting national and state attention for this. And I'm proud of this work and I'd be more than happy to talk about the money we've invested with this behavioral health money for the clinicians and the money for Mobi Abatement to increase the sheriff's co-responder program. I actually rode along with them and I was running along with them here in Berthard for some, for some response, and I wanted to say how proud I am of the sheriff's department for their national model and how they're, they're just a national exemplar for how to do co-response. Happy to talk to you about that at length. So some good news, then I'm gonna talk a little bit about some yucky news. We have some challenges with federal and state funding. It seems like it comes every day, some things new and changing, and we are gonna be facing with the state funding from the special session last year, some caps and some cuts. And we're, tomorrow I have an eight-hour budget meeting, budget retreat, and welcome you all to come. It's a public meeting, if you'd like to come sit and listen to us talk about budget, and we are looking for ways that we can do things and do them even more efficiently, which we have been doing every, every year since I got on the board, but now we're getting into cutting off bones and limbs. We've cut off, there was no fat to cut with, we've leaned off some muscle, and now we're gonna be looking at how county does things. It's gonna look a little different, but we are bound and determined to deliver as best of services we can and be more than happy to talk to you about that at length. But I just wanted to show, tell you all, the county has been around for over 160 years. I'm the first woman to ever hold a seat, this seat, 160-year history of Laramie County. We're one of the original 17 counties of Colorado, and, and things looked different the county has been around for over a hundred and sixty years. I'm the first woman to ever hold this seat in the history of Laramie County. We're one of the original seventeen counties of Colorado. And, and things looked different back then and we will continue to be around. We've been around for a hundred and sixty years and we will continue to deliver services and take care of our residents and all of you and nurture our partnerships. So I wanted to share that. So now I'm going to turn this over really quickly, and I know we're kind of going a little quickly. But this is Leslie Ellis, our Director of Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources. So all the things I've talked about with roads and bridges and conservation, solid waste, all these things are under Director Ellis. She's amazing, fantastic. Used to be our community planning director. And I know your staff are well acquainted with her. And I'm going to let her talk about our transportation and safety plans and turn this over to her. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, trustees, mayor, staff, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for inviting me. Good to be here. I'll just go very quickly through the transportation items. And I know you have some handouts and a little flyer or two that will take you to the webpage. I wanted to let you know too that our team just completed the transportation master plan. And that's going to the commissioners next week for review and approval. And then it goes to the planning commission the week, two weeks after that. And so that's been a really important effort that's given us a lot of great information about what is also a funding challenge that we have. And some of you may recall, last year we had on the ballot an item to ask voters for a point one five cent sales tax to basically fund about fifty million dollars worth of transportation funds a year. And that was not passed. It narrowly was defeated. And so we've been doing some work since then to understand why was that, what's on people's mind? And just ask, ask voters and make, you know, make more information available in the community about this issue. And so we're really focused on safety and resiliency and efficiency of our transportation system. We have about nine hundred miles of unincorporated roads and over four hundred and twenty bridges. Many of those bridges are fifty years old and aging out. So that starts to become a safety issue as well. And so we're working through the transportation plan. These were the goals from the plan, but really focused around safety, dealing with emergencies and so on. I'm not going to read them because we're short on time. But we, you know, despite doing a lot of work on transportation and many projects over the years, this is kind of a little known fact, but we get very little money through property tax that goes through our road and bridge mill levy. And so it really ends up being about seventy-five cents on a home. I'll keep moving along. All this information is on the flyer that you have. But what we're seeing is that we can fund about a quarter of our needs with our existing funding. And we have about a six hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall over time without some additional funding. We've identified about five hundred projects. If you'd asked me a couple of weeks ago, I could tell you which ones are near Berthoud, but you can look at the QR code and go and find the map if you're particularly curious about, about that. The webpage, investinleramere.co is the place with all the information about that Q and A and projects and so on. And I'm happy to answer any questions if we have time later.
And thank you, Leslie. And Leslie is phenomenal. She is a great partner. And we're very lucky down here at Laramie County. And I could go on and on about that. There's other things. We're getting ready to close landfill next year at its current location. But we've started construction on the transfer station and some of that work. Want to remind you, the hazardous waste material programs there, do not throw your batteries away. They start fires at the landfill. Your toothbrushes, things that are batteries, please take them to that location and they will recycle and take care of them for you. So I hope that you'll remember that batteries can be recycled. And also visit that hazard waste garage. It's a very successful program. And they say there's about, what, four hundred, four hundred and seventy tons that come through that. But they're able to recycle paint and keep some of that toxic waste out of our landfill. So if you haven't seen that, I'd be more than happy to take you on a tour. And our new landfill is under construction and there's a lot of great new emergency merging and exciting changes and technologies going in there. And that's another thing we can talk on another day. But our solid waste department is phenomenal. I'm very excited about that. And I just wanted, and on another positive note, invite you all to our two thousand and twenty-five Laramie County Fair and PRCA rodeo. I'm the rodeo liaison. Love it. They're a great team and they work very hard. In two thousand and twenty-three, we won mid-size rodeo of the year for the Western States, which we had never done in the seventy, well, now I think we're seventy-sixth anniversary, a hundred and forty-three anniversary of the fair and rodeo. So I hope that you'll come and join us. It is, I was here at Berthoud Days. Enjoy it. Like I said, my family, you guys have a long, rich agricultural history. I still love that you drive the tractors to high school and I appreciate the town supporting that. I have a tractor in my backyard right now. I wish my husband would move it to a different spot, but he drives it down. We share it with a different farmer down in Berthoud. And so we drive it back and forth. But really, this is a legacy of community and tradition. And this is also your tradition, a hundred and forty-five years of community spirit. And it started, and I'm not sure people knew, it started in eighteen eighty-seven in Fort Collins. And then it moved to Loveland in nineteen twelve into the ranch on two thousand and three, where we have two hundred and forty-three acres that the taxpayers approved that we could buy. We just added another eighty acres to the north. And so we're going to be doing some more things. There's a new master plan and lots of things are going. But you approved a tax in nineteen eighty-eight to pave the way to today's fairgrounds. And then two thousand and seventeen, you renewed that tax. And we are on our way to being a very sustainable, wonderful ranch. We have record-setting community engagement through there. We're stronger participation than ever. We have six hundred and twenty-three four-H youth exhibitors inspected, a hundred and fifty open class exhibits. Please visit the dairy barn and the four-H barn, walk through the barns, come to buy some ice cream. Look at all those wonderful quilts. If you haven't seen the quilts, come check them out. And, and really, this is amazing way to support our youth and support all these local families and volunteers. And there's a lot of passion and dedication. And then of course, my, my favorite is the rodeo. And we have lots of ranching roots and a lot of history. And like I said, it's a professionally run rodeo. It's televised on Cowboy TV. Everybody watched that. But people on my rodeo board, they love it. And this year, for the next two years, we have the best act in rodeo circuits coming to be at our rodeo. And I forgot his name, but he's, they've been talking about it with me since I became a commissioner. And I keep forgetting, but they, they're so excited. We have him this year and next year. There are some still tickets for, I think, not that transigned on Sunday. But also there are some on Tuesday and Wednesday, Monday and Tuesday are still available. So I really hope that you'll come out and check it out. And then I wanted to share, and I brought these, which is, I didn't have enough, so I'm going to hand these to the mayor if that's okay. One of them is our ranch master plan. So what's exciting is it's Sunday, Friday, the first day. Come and we have indigenous opening and we have some other things happening. We have a high adrenaline horseback stunt show called Shockwave Truck Riders, the wing eating contest. That's won't be happening with me. And then we have this amazing fifteen-year-old DJ, DJ Lil Coop. Come check out. And then for those who don't, we have an autistic day or sensory day. For people who don't like all the sounds and lights of the fair, we turn that all that off. And people come to ride the carnival and experience the carnival with all the noise and stuff. And it's a very, actually, we have hundreds of kids and families come. So I recommend you coming. And then we have this house of butterfly, which is new, and some other activities. Lots of vendors, lots of great food. And I won't go into all of that. But I'm told that I will not need to cook for at least a few days because I'll all be there. But the reason I also want to bring this up is that our ranch master plan campus is changing as the ranch is changing some of the parking spots. As you can see in this, up in this little corner, above the little red spots, those are going to be new. The new where the handicap parking is going to be. That's going to be changed this year. Then you'll see in front of the blue arena will now be that little outdoor arena area, which is going to be changing and have some food trucks and vendors out there. And lot F will not become the, that was the handicap one, and now they're moved to the red zones. And there's also going to be a drop-off and right-chair area as well to kind of, for safety and for folks to access. We're also doing lots of expanses, more parking places, improving traffic in and out of the ranch and riding County Road Five. Lots of infrastructure. This is your tax money at work. But this is a year of transition. And I want you to come and take a look at the fair as it is currently this year. Because this is, this year's fair is a milestone. We are last time gathering on the original ranch layout before shifting to the new area of events, space and possibilities. And so next year, we're going to move towards these, we're going to honor our community legacy. But we're moving towards this new phase two on the horizon with this grand lawn. We'll have outdoor concerts. There's lots of things in there. And I guess why I gave you that, that annual report so you can look more and dive into that. But this picture is a little picture of what we're looking at. If you haven't been out there, come check it out now so you can see what it looks like now and it will be changing. And yeah, the great lawn is something I'm excited about. So come celebrate with us. Grounds open at four P M. on the weekdays and ten AM on, sorry, on Sunday. And again, come ask me if you have any questions. And trust me, I could keep talking. But I'm going to just say, hey, thank you for letting me present. See you at the fair. And what questions do you have?
Thank you. Trustees, any burning questions here?
First of all, thank you so much for coming. And it just seems like you're doing such a great job.
Thank you. I love my job.
To be so proud of some of the things you're doing. There are a lot of shortfalls out there. And I just wonder how you, how you're going to address those. I mean, it sounds like they're monumental in scope from a dollar standpoint. And will you prioritize or what's the solution, do you think?
Well, we have to prioritize first by state statute. There's things that the state says we have to do by state statute. One of those is running a jail. The sheriff runs it. We pay for it. And so that's one of my statutory duties is to go through and hand, walk through the jail and expect it every year with the other commissioners. So if you go to budgetexplorer.com, you can look at somewhere where our budget is and where some of those expenses are. And that's about half our budget. So we asking, we're in our budget cycle right now. What we do, we start from the ground up. We ask departments and directors and the other electeds. What, how, what do you, what do you need to do? What do you have to do state statute-wide? What do you think is priorities? And what do you think you could change or do more efficiently or better? And then we're just looking for what we can shave off here and there. We need to maybe make six million dollars in cuts before next year. That's a lot. And, and we are hopefully going to do it by keeping the services, but doing things a little differently. And so we're looking at staff capacity and vacancies. We're probably not going to fill for right now. But there's really a lot of uncertainty with the federal government, with the budgets and the SNAP programs and some of those other things that are out of our control. And so we're still adjusting and figuring out what that means, what that looks like. And when I say it changes daily, I'm not kidding. So.
And then the landfill closing. I know you said there's going to be another one. Did it just reach capacity? What was the reason?
Yes, it did reach capacity. And thank you too, thank you for that question. We would have been closed already, but we have this amazing solid waste director and someone who runs the landfill. And I just took a tour last week. Trust me, you think it's not fun going to landfill. Trust me, come with me. I'll show you. You'll love it and you'll come back. And our Laramie one-on-ones students will love it. They must love the recycling and the hazard waste group. But they've been using technology and drones and looking at the airspace, which is the area that you can start keeping trash in. And they were able to get us about another year and a half of airspace, which saved us millions of dollars, which is not money in the bank, but helped us start funding and building the new landfill. And so that new landfill is already has a building and some weights or weighing scales. Thank you. It's been a long day. This is our big day too. And so it's important that, that we get that funded and going. And there'll be transfer stations and, and that's with our partnerships with other municipalities, what they wanted to see in this. As we worked regionally for a regional waste shed, because if you, as Mayor, and Mayor Potomino, I'm all about partnerships and collaboration. We're better together. And when we leverage resources and work on reducing duplication, we can do anything. Natural disasters, the behavioral health center, all these things that show that we have done and accomplished things that other people haven't been able to do or even thought they could accomplish because of what we've kind of partnered and do together. And I know our staff and our, your town manager and our county manager have regular meetings and at staff level, there's lots of great partnerships and conversations. So I think it will be a challenge. And things are going to be looking a little different. But I know we're dedicated to making sure we're still serving the residents the best we can.
The landfill is a great service. I mean, it really is.
I think people don't realize how important it is. And we're looking to be building a new landfill to maybe not use it. We're hoping to have at least forty percent diversion, including while using it as a wooden biomass and some other things. And so a lot of this is emerging technologies. I can't really quite talk about it publicly yet, but I'm really excited. And we're really hoping to have a circular, almost a circular economy up there and work on how we can keep things out of the landfill. But really, come learn about the batteries and the hazard waste. I think you'd be surprised how much is happening already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Else? I just want to know where the new landfill is going to be.
Well, we, we're going to open July first next year.
Where?
It's north of Wellington.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I think there's some things on the solid waste on the email.
Updating a lot of public information soon. There's also a transfer station at the current site. So for folks coming from south, that would be a more convenient location.
And will we have a transfer station back in Berthoud again?
I don't believe we will. Though this will be where, that, that has been gone for about four years, but that transfer station will, is being built and the ground is broken at the Loveland. So you can, you don't have to roll it up to Wellington. You're able to go and do a lot of recycling and some of this other stuff at the current location. It's not going to be completely shut down. We just won't be dumping trash in that landfill. So. Any other questions? You have my email.
Thank you. And I'd encourage the audience too. Commissioner Shattuck Minelli is very, very responsive. And trustees, feel free to, you know, you don't need to go through me or staff to have to do this. Just go directly to Commissioner and show back to you. Thank you very much.
I think Mayor Potomino.
No, thank you so much for coming, Commissioner. I really appreciate it. Really appreciate all the excellent information you've provided for us. And you're always welcome to come down here and chat with us.
Well, great. I would love to come back and talk to you about our two thousand and twenty-four agricultural producer survey findings and other things. So if you have topics, would love to come back and talk. And like I said, I love my job. Call me. We can sit down, have coffee or talk about things or even go for a walk. And thank you for all the work you're doing. I look forward to seeing your arbitorium and some of the other projects coming forward. And thanks for the invitation tonight. And I wish you all well.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is the, sorry, I'm reading this backwards. Farmstead Third Filing. This is a public hearing. And just for the audience, a public hearing will go as staff will introduce the topic. The applicant will have a chance to then speak if they'd like to, to the project. The board will be able to ask questions to staff or to the applicant. Then I will open that up to a public hearing. This is a chance for those in the audience tonight to provide your testimony, your insights, being residents or affected by the project. And then after hearing all that, we'll close that and bring it back to the board for deliberation and a vote. Right now, I'd like to turn it over to our community development director and, oh, we have Tom. I'm sorry. Am I doing this backwards? Okay, yeah, welcome. Senior Planner, Tom Hillenbrand. Actually, you're, you're in, you changed again, right? Is it planning manager?
I didn't.
Great. All right. A little behind time for a guy.
That's okay. All good. So good evening, mayor, trustees. Again, Tom Hillenbrand, planning manager. So before I think we're waiting for the screen to. So this item before you this evening, this is the Farmstead Third Filing Project. The currently undeveloped one hundred and twenty-four acre property is located at the southeast corner of Mountain Avenue and Weld County Road One. The subject property is currently Zoned PUD for Plan Unit Development and is designated as suburban business, suburban residential, as well as urban residential on the future land use map contained within the comprehensive plan. The applicant is proposing two requests this evening, which is neighborhood master plan and rezone. According to project records, three of the four parcels making up Farmstead Third Filing were annexed in nineteen ninety-seven, while the fourth parcel was annexed in nineteen ninety-eight. All four parcels were Zoned PUD in April of two thousand. The subject parcels were included in the Farmstead Second Filing Neighborhood Master Plan, which was approved in two thousand and twenty-one. The Farmstead Second Filing included the subject property, which is outlined in red on the screen, as well as the land directly to the west across Weld County Road One. At that time in two thousand and twenty-one, the properties to the west were rezoned as a matter of function and proximity to existing utilities. The intent was to rezone the parcels to the east of Weld County Road One, what is now being referred to as Farmstead Third Filing, at a later date as development became more feasible. So here we are, four years later, and the proposed Farmstead Third Filing is relatively consistent with the Farmstead Second Filing Neighborhood Master Plan approved again in two thousand and twenty-one. Their overall total density has been reduced with the current proposal and modifications have been made to the proposed commercial areas. Over the course of the last few years, the town has phased out the PUD process as well as the PUD Zone District, and it is no longer a preferred zone district. The town has encouraged property owners with PUD zone properties to transition their projects to a current zone district rather than continuing with the PUD and FDP process. And FDP just stands for Final Development Plan. And by doing so, developers can alter their development plans to align more closely with the vision found in the most recent version of the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan's future land use map is a guiding document and is not, and it is not a set boundary such as a zoning map. Applicants for rezoning provide information on how the intent of the comprehensive plan of future land use map can be met by rezoning through the rezoning request rather. And this is the second application for the Farmstead Third Filing Neighborhood Master Plan and Rezone. The first application was withdrawn by the applicant in September of two thousand and twenty-four to allow the applicant more time to address request changes, requested changes, that is, made by the school district pertaining to the future school site location and address the neighbor concerns. And that application actually never came before the town board trustees. It was withdrawn at the planning commission meeting. If correspondence provided by the property owner or LGI Homes with the neighbor and pertaining to those specific comments are attached to your staff report. The Neighborhood Master Plan is a conceptual design of the development required with a rezoning or major subdivision application that depicts the applicant's vision for the overall development, including zoning, transportation, pedestrian network, parks, open space, subdivision identity standards and other amenities. The Neighborhood Master Plan is binding on the development and all future planning and zoning actions must follow the approved plan or they apply for an amendment of said plan. The Farmstead Third Filing Neighborhood Master Plan proposes commercial at the northwest corner, transitioning to higher-density residential lots for the remaining portion along Mountain Avenue, single-family alley-loaded lots south along Weld County Road One, as well as along the northeast corner, a future public school site at the east central property line, and lower-density residential lots on the remaining portions of the site. The zoning map similarly shows SC or suburban commercial at the northwest corner, UR or urban residential along Weld County Road One, and SR suburban residential for the remaining portions of the site. Section thirty-six dash one of six of the municipal code states that a Neighborhood Master Plan must consist of specific elements, as mentioned just a moment ago, including but not limited to zoning, transportation, open space and parks. There's staff and referral agency. Through staff and referral agency review, it was found that the Neighborhood Master Plan contains the required elements. And this screen before you shows the two proposed pocket parks and the future school site. So this site provides a quick reference showing the previous school site location where the previous application left off back in twenty twenty-four and the new location as reflected in the current proposal. School, the school site, of course, here is outlined in red. And you can also see here the general changes in this area of the project due to the relocation of the school site. And it is important to note that the Thompson School District was a referring agency and they did confirm acceptance of the new school site location. So section six of the Town Development Code states that the town shall use the following review criteria as seen in your packet and on this screen, in addition to other applicable provisions of the code to evaluate the application. In order to approve a Neighborhood Master Plan, the criteria must be met. Planning Commission finds that the Farmstead Third Filing Neighborhood Master Plan request meets the Neighborhood Master Plan review criteria. Specific details on how the projects are meeting those criteria are provided in your staff report. So moving on to this own rezone request. As already noted, the subject property was Zoned PUD in April of two thousand. In twenty twenty-one, when the Farmstead Second Filing Neighborhood Master Plan was approved, the intent was to rezone the parcels to the east of Weld County Road One, what is now being referred to again as Farmstead Third Filing, at a later date as development became more feasible. The proposed Farmstead Third Filing is relatively consistent with the Farmstead Second Filing approved in twenty twenty-one. And as a reminder, the town has phased out the PUD process and the PUD Zone District is no longer a preferred zone district. And by rezoning the property to a current zone district, developers can alter their development plans to once again align more closely with the vision found in the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed commercial area would be focused in the suburban commercial zoned area at the northwest corner of the site, while the residential uses would be focused in the suburban residential as well as the urban residential zone district. This request is consistent with the future land use map contained in the future or in the Comprehensive Plan. So rezoning is addressed through an official zoning map amendment. Section three of the Development Code states that the purpose uh for the purpose of establishing and maintaining sound, stable and desirable development within the town, the zoning map shall not be amended except when it addresses one or more of the criteria provided on the screen and in your packet as well. Planning Commission at their hearing found that the proposed rezoning meets criteria five. So again, Planning Commission heard the request for approval of the Farmstead Filing Neighborhood Master Plan and Rezone request at their June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five hearing and voted unanimously on both the Neighborhood Master Plan and Rezone to send their recommendation of approval to the Town Board Trustees. And with that, I'm available for any questions and the applicant I do believe will be providing a presentation as well.
Thank you. Uh questions for staff? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? Welcome.
Uh trustee members and Mayor Carspec, uh thanks for having here tonight. Steve Schreier, Schreier Resources, nine hundred Greenfields Court, Fort Collins, Colorado, representing LGI Homes, Postmodern Development and Dreamfinders Homes uh for the project. It's hard to follow Tom because she does such a good job. I feel like I'm just repeating a lot of slides, but uh one of these days I'll get one she doesn't have. Maybe we'll see. You guys, everybody knows where this project is. You drive by it every day. It's at the southeast corner of State Highway fifty-six and County Line Road. Just this sits there today, filing two, as you see us under construction out there is positioned where the yellow platted lots are, with filing three being the agricultural fields to the east, County Road Run One running north and south uh through the property. Everything that we're doing out there, number one is the roundabout that will be taking place at Highway fifty-six. Uh number two will be a roundabout that will be building at Tenderfoot and County Road One. The third, number three is the roundabout that you'll see at Nebraska and County Road One. Number four, number four is the Portland Adaptive Playground that we're under construction with right now. We have the uh over excavation done for the pool and the clubhouse building. We're underway with construction of the footers on that facility right now. Number five is the ten acre regional park that we're underway with as well. We have the sidewalks um on site today, a port um in place and it'll connect up to the Adaptive Playground Park, which we're hoping to start construction on in August as well. Uh number six is the massive, big, beautiful thirty-inch sanitary sewer line that we're constructing through the entirety of County Road One to Nebraska, through the Nebraska roundabout, up to the Tenderfoot Nebraska, uh Tenderfoot Roundabout, then west um and then north across Highway fifty-six. This is a town line that will continue on running northwest off our property uh and feed a lot of us who are uh from the town. Right now, we turned the corner just about where number four is positioned, where the clubhouse is, and we're starting north on that segment up to fifty-six. So there's a lot of heavy lifting going on with filing two uh that we've worked hard and collaborated with and partnered with the staff and the town on to to complete a lot of these uh construction improvements. Um then the zoning is pointed pointed out, we have the suburban uh residential, which is the major of the yellow area. That's where the bulk of the single-family homes would be. The urban residential is a little bit higher in density. And then also also the suburban commercial, which is where we plan on for future commercial areas in the site. This is Farmstead Filing One, Two and Filing Three as it sits out there today. Filing One is obviously complete and done. Filing Two, we're working on as as we've talked today. The first seventy-five homes will be positioned in this area right here. It's kind of our first phase. Then the second phase will be the remainder of this area with the apartments and commercial area following phase four. You can see on this plan that three roundabouts positioned on the property of fifty-six being here in County Road One. So what we're talking about tonight is filing three, everything on this side of County Road One. Uh the last planning and zoning meeting, this is the site that we had um a year ago whenever we pulled the application. It shows the school site in the northeast corner as it has since two thousand nineteen. At our meeting, the school site showed up and said that they did not prefer to have the school site in that location despite five rounds of review and them not commenting on it until the fifth round uh because some oil and gas facilities off property positioned over in this area. It was within a two thousand uh foot buffer that they developed in a position of school. So we've worked with those guys back and forth and worked with the town and the school district and moved it south to this area. So it still has a ten acre school site. It just moved south. So what we did is really just swap the lots and blocks with single-family residential from north to south in this position. You also notice with this scenario, we have a road now that goes out to fifty-six. We worked with staff and we pulled it off of the property line to feed in this area so that we could get it to a school site to Nebraska. So this would be Nebraska coming east to west to the school site. The lot and block yield, you can see we have a hundred and forty-two sixty-foot wide lots, a hundred and thirty-three fifty-foot wide lots, fifty-four forty-five by one ten single-family detached, and we have some townhome product as well. This is before and after comparison. I think Tom had a good slide of this as well, just showing the difference. And we have really one unit difference in the in the unit count. Uh parks and open space. Uh it's important to point uh important to point out the Magenta Lines. These are, this is the ten-foot trail that we worked with staff on to get along fifty-six east to west. We also have a major network trail coming across uh Tenderfoot that would be in this position and also Nebraska in this position here coming east and west. That's, you know, in conjunction with all the sidewalks and everything and other trails and open space areas we have within the project itself to provide the network connectivity. Um, this has just been a large one of the pocket parks with Tom already showed, um just showing how we have those. It's important to point out too, um Farmstead Filing Two has the ten acre park. We are overloaded a little bit on filing two, knowing that this was one master plan community, filing one, filing two and filing three. Not to put all of our eggs in one basket, but we put a lot of emphasis into the park, ten acre park and filing two with the pool and the playground and all the things that are going on there. So this side here has a little bit uh less park area, but it does meet the overall requirement for the whole master plan community as a whole. Uh public comment, uh Planning Commission, uh Sarah Lincoln, who is here tonight, uh yeah, posed some questions. Um irrigation water, that the Newell Farm Park is a working farm. She has some questions about the detention pond and views, uh some ideas on access and trails. And then she also mentioned that it was a five hundred to three thousand seat amplifier with overflow parking into our neighborhood. We absolutely know like that there's an irrigation line that flows through the bottom end of the Newell Park. The Newell Park area is this green highlighted area that you see here. So there is an irrigation line that currently runs through here. The diagonal is the McIntyre Ditch and there used to be a head gate there, but it's not functioning right now. But we intend on relocating it to this position and providing the head gates so there is irrigation water. Already spoken with Ken Matthews uh with the town and he and I are on the same page of how that's going to occur so that the water will be continued to be delivered to that park in the future. The views, uh we retained the detention pond. You can see in this area right here, it was on the first two thousand nineteen plan in this position so that the views would be preserved to the southwest and to the south. So we kept the detention pond on our property as well. We also added an eighteen and a half foot buffer along this western edge in this position and we removed the three-story apartments that were here and replaced them with two-story um residential product. Access and trails, we worked with staff uh to position the roadways in this configuration and in this configuration here out to fifty-six. This will only be a right in and right out. The C dot access plan is dictating this to only be a right in and right out there. That will never be a full movement. Um, we've asked for other movements on this side of the highway and filing two and were turned down emphatically. And then uh five hundred to three thousand seat amplifier in the future. I'd just like to point out, you know, the overflow parking, if that was to come into our neighborhood, that's half of the Blue Arena. The Blue Arena seats seven thousand, roughly seven thousand people. So if you're, we just like to be involved in those discussions as those master plans get moved forward on the on the Newell Park of how that's going to work. Uh because we do have some concerns with that much overflow parking coming into the neighborhood if that were to happen. Also, public comment, uh we had comments from Kevin Bier. Um density issues, open space deficiency, green space deficiency and threats to their farm. This is filing three that we're talking about tonight. The Bier Farm is right here in this position, uh just east off our property. At the timeline, in two thousand nineteen, uh the project was approved Neighborhood Master Plan. Uh it was Zoned PUD in two thousand. Uh Kevin and Emily purchased their property in two thousand twenty and then also Bradley Stir purchased the South Adjoining property in two thousand twenty. Uh they offered comments on May of twenty twenty-three and then they did speak at the other hearing we had last year, two thousand twenty-three in August. Uh we spent, members from our team has spent like the last ten months working with these guys, trying to figure out uh some common middle ground. Um, this was the original plan in two thousand nineteen. Everybody saw earlier the school site that was in this northeastern corner. The roads, the road went right along the edge of their property, the access road to the school out to fifty-six with drop-off areas, the building, parking, all in this area, right adj- right adjacent to their property line. Um, our first, the middle application in two thousand twenty-three kept the same configuration of the school as the school was telling us this is where it needed to be. So see the parking and the roadway right along the edge of their property. Today, this is what we have. You see their property in red in two thousand twenty-five and you see the lots we have here with the road being pulled away from their property coming down to Nebraska. And we replaced it with some alley-loaded, single-family homes of riding their property. The school site is here to the south. If you look in on a enlarged view, looking in zoomed in, you can see the difference we have between the existing roadway, which was approved previously to what we're asking for tonight. Um, these are just some comments. I'm not going to go through each one of our dialogue back and forth. Um, we talked about green space. We talked about fencing. We talked about setbacks, trees, landscape burns, removal of lots, um plantings on their property, all kind of different things we went back and forth with those guys on. And then our plan, it's important to point out that town code does not require any buffer or fencing or open space between the two properties. Um, but we're offering to provide a fifteen to twenty-three foot wide landscape burn, two to three foot tall with variable height. Also evergreen trees, thirty foot on center, three-inch caliber. No school site or parking lot next to their property. We shifted the major street west off the property line. Six-foot privacy security fence in sensitive areas and no trail or public access. That was important to them so that there wasn't public walking along this back property boundary looking in at their farm. And we also offered rear alley-load town townhomes. I mean, just actually rear alley-load homes with limited windows to face to their property. These are some of the cross-sections that we had that would face off the alley towards their property. So we feel like we addressed all their comments. Um, and then this is the end. Uh Planning Commission recommended the House approval and we're here tonight to ask her to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, questions for the applicant? Trustee Wing?
The the um buildings that are to the farthest north on on this drawing, what are those?
Those are townhomes.
Okay, and there are some apartments in this though?
No, the apartments are on filing two.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, uh referencing the nine single-family detached units on the west side of the future Newell Farm Park as well as the detention pond.
Yes.
What is the intent for those products? Is that all two-story?
It's two-story, single-family, yes. We removed the three-story apartments.
Okay. Would you be open to either the removal of those units or switching to a single-story product for that location?
I I don't think town code uh, you know, dictates that. It'd be hard for us to do that. Everything we're building out there is basically a two-story product. We have very few one-story products. Um, it would be hard for us. We did work with staff on the eighteen and a half foot buffer and then did keep the detention pond to the south um so that the views would be preserved. So it'd be really hard for us to do it. We're really short lots on this project with all the infrastructure we're putting in on filing two with the roundabouts. We're trying to get every lot we can.
Thank you.
I I do have a couple more follow-up questions.
Just doing.
Um, and I guess I would ask staff uh this question as well. This essentially, at this point, will be the first impression coming into Berthold from essentially the east. And I just wonder aesthetically i- if if we could control it, would we rather have single-family homes on fifty-six than townhouses aesthetically, even for the neighborhood?
Yeah, a- actually, the first thing you'll see will be the new town park and Newell Newell Park would be the end, that what's your first going to see.
Okay.
Then the first housing product you see would be the townhome. Note that those townhomes will be fronting their front door onto fifty-six with the rear garage being behind it. So you're not going to see a garage, if you will. So if we put a single-family product there, you might not have a garage.
And depending on the elevations, I I personally believe you can make townhouses look gorgeous. So again, I don't know what they're going to look like, but would you concur with his statement?
Getting used to this. Yeah, so the the townhomes, uh the front-facing would be very similar to what is currently being proposed also on Fickle Farm Fifth, which um so the this is consistent uh for this area and again, going back to the future land use map and the um the designated um character district for this area would be more of that higher-density walkable community. Um, and then o- of course, then whatever commercial component is there on the corners, both on this corner as well across Weld County Road One would be more of the neighborhood commercials. So again, it's that walkable, compact community. Um, and that is desired along Mountain Avenue um within this character area.
Again, I I would say aesthetically, now that you've explained that, I would rather see the front of a townhouse than the backyard of a house.
It'd be good to keep it to questions.
Well, nice. Yeah, sure. Um, the other question is, I'm just curious about sales, um how how they're progressing if you're on scope with the timing you were considering.
Well, there's a lot of things that have caused us to be behind schedule, including the rain we got again today. But um it's uh we're behind schedule. We're hoping to pull building permits here shortly. We're underway selling homes. Right now, we currently don't have anything for sale. So it's coming shortly. We we're hoping to pull, like I said, the first seventy-five homes of filing two, just south of the park area here shortly. And we'll start building products for sale.
I do have a question first, um.
Trustee Albert.
Um, I'm just curious if we are working in tandem with C dot on speed limits uh in in addition to this product because as we put homes right off the state highway, um I don't know if we're working to amend those speeds because those are pretty high speeds going out that direction.
Good cr- good question. And um our town engineer Luke Seber is here and I believe he'd be better suited to address that question than myself.
At this time, we are not at the stage of speed limits figuring that out, but there would be an adjustment based on just the roundabout entry. As most roundabouts are, it's kind of like a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit going in. Or even fifteen, depending on the size and then it would incrementally increase. And like you said, based on the density. It would. Slowly increase as we get further east. So we would have lower speed limits through probably from east of this property all the way to First Street. Just because this will be a, a big increase in traffic along that corridor.
So we intend to have those slower speeds go all the way into town essentially?
Yeah, it's likely. That plus additional developments further west of this property would.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll add to that. Like we work with C dot and they basically have their way and it's their way. So we do what we can do. We can ask, like Luke said, we can ask for things and try to do what we, but they, they will be stick.
Yeah. Super frustrating, right?
Other questions?
On that, the far east, the, the new road that you bent out from the. Is that going to be right in, right out as well?
When this property on the corner develops, this will actually be a full movement.
Okay.
This will be full movement. This, the one in the, this one right here will be the right in, right out.
And is that one on the corner? Would that be a light or another roundabout?
It depend on the traffic counts going out of it. And keep in mind too, this roundabout, I don't know who else here for the last filing two presentation, but the, the roundabout here is substantial. And it's landscape beautifully. We're working with town staff and we had a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar budget for landscaping aside of this. It's not going to look like the ones out at the interstate. I mean, it's going to be very, very nice. And I, I joked with Mara earlier, we don't have a statue of him in the middle. We do have the spot in the middle for some sort of statue. Because it, the artwork at the interstate is beautiful. And I know, you know, town manager Kirk has asked for that so they could incorporate some artwork there in the future.
I had a question about the pocket parks. It seems. If it goes compared to the second filing, they're a little, they're not adjusted. I mean. So according to this third filing here, it's a little higher up than the other ones. Or do you have a, a slide on anything on, on the bike and ped trails?
Yes. Okay. I could go back to that.
Cause the, the pocket parks have a trail in them, right?
Yes, they do. And around the outside and then it goes through the middle. So here's, you see the trails interior to this pocket park? That's, that's going around the outside. And then at the end of it pops out the other side and goes west over to. This area. So you can, essentially if you're here at the school, you could walk the whole way through here. And do this, get to the safe zone crossing area to Nebraska roundabout and cross over to the park.
Oh, okay. So just to clarify, I was thinking if they were all lined up, the reason you didn't do that because you want folks to go to the roundabout?
That's the safe area to cross. That'll be the crossing. There'll be no crosswalks in this whole segment. Right here. And then no crosswalks in between here because it won't be safe. There's major crossing areas within these roundabouts. And then we can't put the pocket park on Nebraska because that's a major arterial. So it can't really line up anywhere in here. This is kind of an interior to the bulk of the residential units to try to get most of the people out, if you will. And then there also is another trail over here that runs through the backside of these lots right here. You see this? And it comes around this way and it can come over to the roundabout here at Tenderfoot. So let me go back to the center side. It's hard to see the magenta on our drawings. You can, maybe you can see it on your screen.
Yeah.
And then we also have the ten foot trail running along Highway fifty-six. So it'll continue to town as well.
And on the second filing, same thing. There's trails on right. I'm trying to think here. So my, I, I guess my concern to get to it is that even though they're, they'll want to go up to the roundabout or they should, I don't know if they will. Staff or applicant have anything to say to that? I mean, I feel like they'll, the bike will always go the shortest possible way.
So the way those, if you notice. North, south along County Line Road and those alleys don't extend over to County Line Road. So you have to ride a bike through a landscape area to get to it. I guess in theory you could take a trail. There is, there are a couple of trails that run through landscape areas that run east west. And they will connect over to the sidewalk.
That's my suggestion.
Yeah. Those will, those, that trail will run north, south from the roundabout. Certainly there are folks who just cross the road wherever they want to. Any crossing areas that are designated, there won't be any ramps. All of that will.
We meet all the Laramie County urban street standards. We've worked with staff and positioned this best we could.
Okay. And my, my, I was actually thinking the primary destination might be the school. I'm thinking of kids. But I see your point. Okay. Thank you. Trustee's other questions? All right. At this time, thank you. I will open it up to open the public hearing. And if anyone signed up, we'll go in order off of that. After I call your name, if you could please come to the podium, state your name and address again, even though it's on here. And if you could please keep your comments to three minutes or.
Was the amphitheater. There's also a vision for a performing arts center slash community center slash senior center. And how that interacts with this neighborhood is very important. How it interacts with Highway fifty-six and the access, how it interacts with the access into the neighborhood. Parking, traffic, these kinds of things. If you have a performing arts center and you, this is what we really want, maybe. You're going to have maybe seven hundred people in that performing arts center and it will let out, where does that traffic go? If you think about where the park is, there's a lot to the east of it. That the, the town does not own. Maybe the town should own it because the right way that goes through that will have either a light or a roundabout. That would allow a lot of traffic to turn left and go back to town rather than come through the neighborhood. So that is one example of why we need to finish the plan for Newell Farm Park. Before we understand whether this master plan is sufficient. So what we have planned now is on August sixth. The port is going to look at the original vision of Newell Farm Park. And what, what some of the parameters were relative to the master plan that was approved in two thousand twenty-one. And the asks of the Edwards, there were asks about excess parking, you know, extra parking. Accommodation of an outdoor amphitheater. There were, as, as Steve brought up, there were view corridors. And that retention pond is part of the view corridor use or need. But something else that was agreeing to and is not reflected here is. The, the need for potentially some single story homes in that view corridor. So that when you look across, across the detention pond and then you look across the grooves. You can still see Pike's Peak. You can still see the Front Range. So one of the reasons why we want to pay attention to this is that. Music was considered one of the top priorities in the citizen survey that the port did and the town did. And this is one of our last chances to get music into our town. So let's pay attention and that means traffic and parking and all kinds of, and noise outside. We have to think about that. So we need just a little bit of time. We can hit the ground running on it. The other thing that we need to pay attention to is in our recent branding survey. View corridors and the views in the town were, were highlighted. And keeping places where citizens can go and enjoy those views was considered a priority. So that's in line with what some of the original intention was here. And there's a perfect opportunity. There's amazing views here. Doesn't mean we're going to keep them all, but let's pay attention. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave Hughes? Yeah, I can call you on you later for that. Is that what you're here for? Okay, great. Okay, uh, close the public hearing now. Now we'll bring it back. Would the applicant like to rebut any, please?
We did purchase the property from the Edwards, but you know, I don't recall seeing anything where there was a condition of approval or. Any deed that would restrict us to doing single family, you know, one story product there. I didn't see anything to where there was going to absolutely be a large facility amphitheater there with seven thousand people. I've never seen anything like that. I know there's been talk of it. And this is our seventh round of review for this side of the highway for filing three. If you count the last two middles we had before we moved the school site, seventh round of review. And we're just now hearing that, you know, this should be here and we should work together to do this. So. We're kind of out of time and we'd like to move forward and keep our master plan. We'd be happy to work with town staff as you guys plan that property to offer valuable input and feedback, but we'd like to keep moving with our plan.
Thank you for the. All right. Since the applicants rebut, attorney Smith. Before deliberation, could you speak to any legality like regarding a deed and restrictions on heights, if that's possible?
Well, this property wasn't part of a prior. I mean, the, the, it was part of the P U D and the neighborhood master plan. And so in that neighborhood master plan, plan approval, I don't believe there were any conditions. On what would be filing three with regard to views or view sheds. But I would need to defer to staff on that or.
Okay, thank you. I guess I, my question is irregardless of if this is a right, right or wrong thing to do, is there a legal possibility to restrict? Property tonight to single story if the board wanted to?
This is your opportunity to. Master plan this parcel. The. Density and the way it ties into the Newell Farm property is exactly, I believe, what you're considering tonight. I think. In fairness, it's. We don't have the master plan or the Newell Farm at this point. And what I think the board needs to keep in mind is that. The applicant has moved forward with a schedule that works for the applicant. You're being urged to. Delay your approval on this for purpose of the master planning of the Newell Farm. And I think if the applicant were willing to work with the town on that. And would volunteer to do that, that would be fine. I think though to delay this. Because of that. Would. Would, would probably not be something that I would recommend the board do.
Uh, just to repeat, clarify, delay this because of the dual farm?
Right. I think you've been urged to. Pause this development in order for the Newell Farm planning to catch up. And that I think would be something that if the applicant would be willing to work with the town and, and volunteer to delay. That would, that would be the way to approach that. But to just require that delay, I think would be. A difficult thing for the board to do at this point.
All right. Trustee's any thoughts? Right off the bat?
Well, I was kind of tempted to say, let's kind of see if we can't get Newell Farm and. Farm said to work a little bit more to this. To hear the comment of like this being the seventh filing and having no clue that there was plans for a type of park or amphitheater there. Kind of surprises me a little bit because he's even got slides in his presentation showing there's some cohesionness of a park. Being built out of his property with Newell Farm.
For, for clarity, I think there was a, there was an understanding that there, that the town owned that property and then it was slated for a park. But the town doesn't have any approved master plan or concept plan for the park. So we have a lot of ideas. The deed that we agreed to when we purchased the property has some suggested uses. It's a pretty broad range, very similar to the Wagner Farm Park uses. You know, I think we talked about the idea of a performing arts center. I think that's a possibility with or without the project, the Farmstead project. So I think. The, the challenge is that the town has not planned that park site.
Yeah.
And so it's.
And they've taken into consideration some of the park site stuff here. They've seen quite a bit of buffer here behind the town or. What could be townhomes or single family homes along that north side. It's too bad there's oil wells within two thousand feet of the school site. Move that south because it would have been nice to have the school a little bit further north where it was to kind of offset any sort of. Sound or kind of combine the parks together. It's kind of nice to have the school next to a park, but.
We agree with that and understand.
But that's the school district. It's kind of like C dot. But you've got to play by their rules. So, but anyway, that's just kind of my comments of. I kind of feel like there could be a little bit more cooperation or working there with Newell Farm.
And I didn't, I, I think it's customary that we, we move on to board deliberation here, but I'll, real quick, I'll ask attorney Smith. Is it a possibility to bring the applicant back up?
I believe that it is. I, you haven't formally closed the, the testimonial portion of the hearing. And so you can, I think, ask the applicant questions. And then I would recommend. After that, you would make a motion to move the evident, move to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and conduct your deliberation.
Motion to do that? Okay. So it's still open. Did you, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I think I'm finished.
I have one question. Just so I understand what I think people are saying. So these like nineteen homes, is that where you're saying you want the single story? In what exact view are we?
To the east.
I was referencing.
Could you just show me? Would you mind just pointing on here?
The nine single family.
Oh, okay, okay.
Home detached units.
But the, but the homes literally adjacent to that would be two story, right? So what, what would you gain by doing the one row, one story?
So, so at this point, do you have an, an question for the applicant? And that would be appropriate?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then you can have those questions among yourselves.
Any questions for the applicant? I just have one regarding, I, I apologize if you spoke to this, but could you speak again to the buffering? If you have any around Newell and also I'm curious about the gun club?
Yes, sir. So I just want to make a point of clarification. We knew the park was there and we knew it through seven rounds of review. Like I said, we worked with town staff on the road, in and out for the roads. We worked on the buffer. We worked on the types of uses and the zoning. And we did keep the detention pond in this area specifically for views. The low spot is actually over here. So it's actually, we, we, we've worked hard to keep the detention pond in this area. So we did work on the buffering around Newell Farm in this area right here. And it continues the whole way along the town park. So the town owns this. So the town owns this section right here. It's not just one little spot right here. It's this whole piece. This, the, the 7,000 seat amphitheater could be moved over here somewhere in the center of the property. It doesn't necessarily, necessarily need to be right here in this corner tucked in here. So there's a lot of master plan that's going to go on here. And my guess, you guys are going to work at it for over a year before you get your consultants in line and get everything figured out. So I just like to say, we did know about it. We did work with staff. We asked for the master plan. Like Chris Kirk said, there is, there was like town manager Kirk said, there are no plans. So we just ran with what we had and we just asked for it. So we did know about that. The gun club, we did provide a substantial buffer down here. I believe it's 45 or 50 feet of a mound burn with landscaping on it near the gun club.
Do you have any considerations? Okay.
And it actually has town homes backing up with the garages facing the garage and alley facing the gun club rather than the backyards or somebody's front, you know, somebody's usable yard.
Those are going to be town homes down there?
It's a town home product with the garage and alley facing towards the gun club. Behind the landscape burn, that's I think 40 feet.
I remember when Edwards had it, they talked about putting storage units or something down there.
There's a storage unit complex there.
How high was the, the berm? I am worried about the audio. So how high was that?
It's like, it's about six feet. It's, it's a, you know, berm that will go, it's a leaning berm. It's not just one six foot high berm. It'll be a varying height.
Okay, any thoughts? Okay. Any thoughts about that regarding in the amphitheater areas?
If we could, there's the McIntyre ditch that we have to put through there. We talked about it coming through here. If we can mound dirt near and on top of it, we could try to do that. But my guess is they're going to be like C dot in the school district and tell us no. But there's going to be ample on the other side of the fence whenever the park develops to do landscaping of our main trees on the other side of the fence. If there needs to be some sort of, uh, berm to shield the residences, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all for the applicant. Thank you. For now, a, a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'd recommend a motion to, to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. That said, you know, at the point of your deliberations, if you're looking at something that you need to ask the applicant later with regard to a condition, you certainly can bring up the applicant to ask him, uh, whether or not he can agree to those conditions. But for purposes of just, um, more, uh, app, more questions to staff now would be the opportunity or more questions to the applicant now would be the opportunity.
Thank you.
And if there are none, then I would recommend a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Just one for staff regarding, um, Newell Farm. Uh, Ms. Lincoln spoke to this, but with, uh, maybe you could go into a little more detail on the August 16th, I believe, meeting, the port meeting. Um, this is just kind of introducing it to port.
Yeah, so at the August 6th, uh, port meeting, it's the first Wednesday of the month. I think that's right. The port committee will hear from Ms. Lincoln and staff about, uh, the, the town's purchase of the property, what the deed restrictions, what the deed restrictions say and what the ultimate uses of that property could be with the intent of the port committee providing some, uh, feedback to town staff that when they, then we could take and develop a request for proposals for a design consultant to prepare a concept plan. Uh, so getting some initial feedback from the port committee about, uh, what they think the right uses for that park should be. We can then prepare a request for proposals, bring you that back as a, as a design contract to do the initial conceptual planning for that park. Uh, that was something we budgeted for this year anyway, but, um, just haven't gotten to yet. Uh, this, this conversation expedited that. We're going to go ahead and, uh, move that up to August.
Okay, uh, thank you. Though, um, it was spoken to about going up to the roundabout for pedestrians. Is there anything significantly dangerous or illegal or wrong to require a R R F B, like a blinky light, to connect the pocket parts? Uh, for basically kids going to school?
I think the real challenge with County Line Road, uh, as, as you all know, it extends all the way south to Longmont. And, uh, it's a very heavily trafficked roadway and I think it'll only get more heavily trafficked in the future. And so mid-block crossings that are uncontrolled or unprotected, uh, and by that I mean without stop control, whether that's a stop sign or a traffic signal, uh, or a roundabout where, um, where R F Bs and median islands in the middle for pedestrian refuge can occur. Without those, I wouldn't encourage traffic to cross County Line Road, uh, mid-block.
So an R R F B would, but that would allow, even though, so once you're in the street though, it's legally required, the car stop. I see your point here that they're going at a high rate of speed. But the idea with the R R F B would to provide at least the, the visuals of having lights up there too.
It's something we could consider. I think, um, if we were going to put R F Bs or some kind of pedestrian control, I would suggest that it go at the intersection at the south end of the park rather than kind of mid-block. And, and that doesn't connect the pocket parks admittedly. So you'd have to, if you were heading to the school, you would, in theory, you'd go through a pocket park, connect to the sidewalk and go down, you know, a block or, uh, or so to, uh, to the roadway to the south. Or you'd go north to the roundabout and then either one of those would take you to those kind of main roads or connections over to the school site. But, um, mid-block crossing between two intersections in an uncontrolled way on a, on a arterial road is, I, I think is generally discouraged and, and probably unsafe.
Okay, what about Nebraska? What's for crossing there? Is that because you have a-
Nebraska is where the roundabout is, um, right there in the middle of the project.
I'm sorry, the south one then, whatever that street is?
So there, there's nothing planned there specifically for, um, I don't believe that's a stop controlled intersection. Is that right, Luke? It's, yeah, it's just, it's just a through street. So it's, it's stop controlled east-west obviously, but then north-south, uh, traffic will continue through there. That's something we could consider, um, but we'll have to look at that, uh, from a traffic planning standpoint.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions for staff? Is there a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing? Is that correct, Attorney Smith? Okay, is there a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing?
Motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Thank you, trustee Wing. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, trustee Albrecht. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yep.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Karstbeck?
Yes. Okay, that is now closed to the board for deliberation and a vote.
And mayor, I would, I would just, uh, remind the board that, uh, you make your decisions based on the criteria and the code. The staff has outlined those criteria. And the staff has offered, um, some findings on those criteria. The board can consider staff's findings. You of course, um, should probably, um, my recommendation is that you, um, structure your deliberations so that you go through these criteria by criteria and have your discussion and deliberation based on the criteria.
Thank you. Could staff pull that up? Trying to find it in my, uh, first, but I think that's better for everyone if we have that up.
I will start with the neighborhood master plan criteria. That works.
Attorney Smith, do you have to hit all five?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any thoughts initially, uh, trustees? Off the bat?
Just the initial thought, I think, is that this is really difficult. We see something before us that was already in the works, um, when Newell Farm came online. And I think both representatives make, uh, great points. And I think the applicant has done their due diligence and responded to every concern that they had in their power. And I'm grateful for that because we don't always see that. We see a lot of plans that try to glaze over the concerns and, and here they brought them to our forefront and tried to address them. And I, I see value to that. But I also see a lot of value to the Newell Farm concerns and understand their, their urgency for dealing with this now while we can to preserve those, those view sheds as well as traffic in and out of that property. So I see that we're in a really difficult position, um, because we have legal parameters. But I also just want to state that while we have a legal proceeding like this and we have certain things we have to adhere to, it's okay to say that this may not always be the desire of the board to, to have a growth or to have a development of a certain kind. It's okay to say that, um, we're doing this because this is the right thing to do according to the law in front of us. But it doesn't mean that, um, we can't identify with the community and the desire from, from neighbors like Newell Farm and say that we, we feel the same, um, frustration and pain that you do in, in these types of issues. So, um, we can relate and understand those feelings and sentiments perfectly. So I think the goal is to how do we make, what creative solutions do we have, um, within our power to make this work to the best of our ability? And if it were up to me, um, we would limit the, the housing at the front of the property on the north side to one story to at least preserve some view shed there. But knowing that the developer has some constraints, I don't think there's much that we can ask. Especially as they're giving such large property to the school district. There's a lot of, of lost land in that space. So it's really hard to, to find somewhere to ask the applicant to concede, um, some of that, that property. So I don't have a, a perfect solution. It's just, it's a difficult thing.
Good initial thoughts. Trustee Brody?
I think that, um, again, I, I echo, um, the other comments that, but I also look at what the town has done in developing parks and redevelopment of parks. And I, I think that the town will do a fantastic job when it's all said and done. It's hard to say we have to trust the process and this is the cards would have been dealt, so.
Trustee Hardy?
Thank you.
I would kind of repeat some of the similar things about this being difficult. A lot of our decisions up here are pretty difficult. And we got to take into account everybody's personal private, private property rights. But, um, restraining the houses to a single story, to me, when we've got trees in the landscape that you can't stop growing more than a single story, those trees are going to end up being probably 25, 30 feet tall if they're similar trees that we planted in town already canopy. The tree canopy itself is going to be blocking the views, not the building so much, once those get established. So that's kind of a comment that I'd have there, um, that we often forget about. We always focus on the buildings, but not the, uh, tree landscape, tree canopy. I could almost hate to say it, but I think there's, I don't know if it's good or bad karma, but, the homes that are going to be built right there on the property line next to the park with a amphitheater, I can hear it now, will be heavy noise complaints. So, but, you know, we kind of know about it now. It's like building houses after the airport's been slated. So, but anyway, we'll see what happens. I like both plans. I think we can, I've got the confidence that it'll all work out. Maybe not quite to the, uh, picture-esque plans of what we thought, you know, in the last few months, but, um, I think it can work out.
Mayor Karstbeck, if I may. Um, I, I appreciate, uh, trustee Hardy's point, um, from a view perspective. I think oftentimes we forget that, you think about Fickle Park, uh, which is a beautiful mature park with large trees. Uh, it doesn't matter where you're at around Fickle Park. You can't see the mountains from there because of, mostly because of the tree canopy, not because of the houses. Uh, so that is, that is a, uh, consideration that we think about. And the street trees lining the streets adjacent to those homes in the, in the initial phases will not be in the way, but in the future they will absolutely preclude the view of the mountains, uh, assuming that they are heavily treated like most of our, um, streets are in town as the requirement is. And then, um, with respect to the, uh, noise, I do think that when we get to plating, I think it's appropriate to put some, uh, languages on the plats about, um, or, or some other mechanism by which, uh, there's kind of a notice that there's a park next door and that, uh, that one of those uses is for outdoor music venues. Um, I think there are ways to do that. So that at, at least in theory, um, you know, if you buy one of those houses, you can't, it's like if you, I, I think the, the, the point trustee Hardy made about, uh, if you buy a house next to the airport, you shouldn't come and complain about the, the plane noise. But, but that happens all the time and that's okay. That, that's part of the deal. But at least, um, I think during plating, there's, there's opportunities for us to identify those things too.
Okay.
Trustee Wing?
Yeah, I think the applicant's met all the required elements and criteria. And I agree with trustee Brody that, um, I think the town with that amount of space they have to work with, I think they'll do a fantastic park there. And I think it'll be set back far enough from the homes that you'll have a view of the mountains.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I'd really like to thank the applicant for, uh, bringing this neighborhood plan forward. I have a hard time finding fault with it. I think it's a really strong plan. It's a good plan. But, uh, taking a look at our criteria, um, I have a hard time getting over item four, which is in section 30 dash 6 dash 106G. Looking at the negative impacts on adjacent land uses. I think the applicant has done a very good job addressing most of the issues, um, more than most people we see here. But what is known about that park is we have views that are going to be diminished, in my opinion. Particularly by the product that's going to be placed on the west side in those nine single detached homes. I would really like to see a condition that those are single story products. I think that condition would successfully, in my mind, achieve item four along with what the applicant has already done to move this forward.
Can you clarify which properties would be single story?
My condition would be regarding the nine units that would be on the west side of the detention pond and the future Newell Farm Park. This would not, uh, be the town homes to the north. And the reason I say that is largely because I've been out on that property. Kind of envisioned what that park looks like. And the view you're looking at is primarily Longspake Maker and the Indian Peaks. Now that is almost due west, slightly southwest. And those houses are largely in the path of that view shed. I think by making those single story, I think that would successfully mitigate any view issues for neighboring properties, namely the park.
Thank you.
Could we pull up that map again?
What was condition four?
And are you meaning the, uh, the neighborhood master plan?
Yes, please. Thank you.
What condition was that?
Uh, number four.
This one? Does that work?
Yes, that'll work. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, going back to the conditions, uh, any, anything more regarding that trustee Albrecht, you just needed to see it right?
Well, I, I, I see value to that request. And I, you know, I know sometimes when, uh, a product is smaller, you can maybe make more product in that area. So I don't know if more density of single story units would be desirable to the neighbor. But it would protect the view. So I don't know if there's some type of compromise there. But I do, I would be on board with trying to limit those nine units. I think that's a small ask in a big project like this. Not that there haven't been a million other asks to this point. But I do, I do think that would not take away the issue entirely, but hopefully help a little alleviate those, those views being obstructed. I, I do also wonder real quick too, just with future expansion of that park. I mean, should we be looking at more significant roadways going near that park so that there is proper egress and an entrance into that, that area? Because once this is built out, I don't see major roadways being accessible easily. And I, and that might just be my short sightedness. So does anyone else see there being a need to talk a major road access going at this time through that park or at least near the park? If there had to be a major event there?
I, I guess from my perspective, I, I guess, um, I feel the applicant has fully addressed that kind of need, especially with the fact that we don't have a plan on the property. And I feel, I guess from my perspective, those things could be addressable on our end. Particularly with that connection at the center of the property, um, that is ours. I feel- I feel that could possibly work with a future plan for that portion of the park. That's my opinion.
Sure. So with us knowing that our intention is to do something with that property, it's on us to develop some type of infrastructure to get people in and out of there. But will it work in congruity with this plan, I guess is what I'm asking.
Let's throw this over to staff real quick.
I was just going to say that I think one of the benefits, well, so there's two, there's two things at play here. One, we already understand CDOT's, CDOT's access control plan and their distance between signalized or, or you know, roundabout controlled intersections. And so knowing that the future signal will have to go at the far eastern edge of this property to meet CDOT's guidelines, we can then plan and access at some point in the future, whether we purchase the property that that road will ultimately run through or whether or not the current property owner comes in to develop, we can work with them to establish an access off of that road into the property coming from the west. That will give us that full movement stop control. And then having some ride in, ride out in the center of the property will also alleviate larger traffic events. So you know, we'll, we'll need to be mindful of the fact that, you know, a three or 4,000 seat amphitheater may not work from a traffic standpoint. And you know, I think we could talk about performance venues everywhere, anywhere from, you know, several hundred seats to a thousand or 2,000 or 3,000 seats. But through our planning process, we'll identify how traffic will work at major traffic flow times and, and then we'll design accordingly.
So just to clarify, we don't own the property that the current curved road is going through to?
We do not. Yeah. So that's why it's just shown as a stub right now. It's also not, from a traffic standpoint, the traffic, the traffic study doesn't require that in order to make the neighborhood work today because of the access off of Cannonline Road. And so that can be stubbed out for future development when that property at some point develops or if the town chooses to acquire that additional five acres.
That helps clarify. Thank you.
So the town owns the one through just the right of the parking, right? That's what we're talking about?
There, there are three, there are actually three parcels that the town owns. The one that has the hash line, it looks like a road or something. There's a hash line. That, that's actually a dedicated parcel. The agreement that we made when we purchased the land is that the, any road would have to be, couldn't be on parcel two because it was too close to the house and the existing amphitheater space. And so the road would have to extend through parcel three. I think I have those numbers right, which is the, the larger parcel where the smaller road dead ends into that, into that land. Sorry, I don't have the pointers. But you have the existing Lincoln Zone PewDie where the, where the old farmstead home is. You've got parcel two, which is that narrow strip. And then you've got plus or minus five acres there on the east side of that narrow strip the town owns.
And staff feels we could get a pretty wide road in there?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, practically speaking, it would be relatively simple to do. The, the problem again, though, it's not the size of the road, it's the access to 56. And so.
With CDOT controls?
CDOT controlled. Now, at some point, if we're able to work with CDOT and the town chooses to devolve that from a state highway into a local road, we'll control access and we can do whatever we want, so long as it's safe. And, and our, our standards would allow, I think, within the context of the, the length of this road, we could probably make a, a little more significant access work there. But under CDOT's current access control plans, that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen. Now, we're not touching any of the existing accesses today, nor would we unless we completely redeveloped the park or completely constructed the park. So there are existing access points that are full movement that go to the existing farmstead. But those will have, those will necessarily have to change at some point based on whatever plan we ultimately agree on for, for the future development of that park. But those aren't being changed today as part of this approval.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Mayor Protem?
All right. Well, my initial thoughts are very conflicting. I, I would agree with the first trustees and then did you need anything? Oh, we're just closing out. Yeah, this is very tough on me because the applicant has been back so many times. And not with a full kind of view of, of what's going into the amphitheater there. It does make it difficult. And I do think overall, the development to me looks pretty good. I really concur with the mayor Protem on having to restrict that deed. I wish we didn't, but if we are going to attempt to go through this tonight for the applicant, if we had more time, if we could wait till port, then we could have someone go out there and really with an inclinometer or something measure, if you could see the mountains or not on a one story or a two story and what trees are going to be in the way. Not having that benefit, I, I, I think it's my, almost my duty to assume the worst. And the worst would be that a two story would block it, but a one story would allow it. And that's something we have to live in forever, live with forever. And this was a significant investment by the community to make the Newell Farm Park happen. So I, I, if it's all legally possible, I, I feel like to my mind, that's, that's really a need. And that would, would help me satisfy item four there. Item three, I have a real issue with pedestrian design is adequate. I don't, it's hard to blame the applicant, just kind of looking at this maybe with traditional code and stuff. But just seeing how the town has put in things over time, whether that's the west side of Wagner, kids cut through there all the time. Whether that's the south side of Wagner, connecting to a trail from essentially 711, where kids cross, where adults cross. And having to add things later at Spartan Avenue for, for essentially for kids walking, which is something we want to encourage in town. I do feel like there needs to be a condition of at least one specifically an RRFB or you know, a button pressed activated light to get kids to cross to the south, somewhere to the south of the final, the final round, roundabout on the south. What, what street that is, I would like to connect it between the roadways, but, or I'm sorry, between the, the trails. But I don't think kids will go up to the roundabout and then curve back down. I don't think adults will. I mean, some, some people that would follow the law would, but I think most people are just going to either cut through the grass or, or whatever. I mean, anyone that drives through town in the morning sees that people will even cut through Main Street to get to Cosina, to get their breakfast burrito. So I, I don't see us, you know, even though you could walk 20 feet, 30 feet down the road and, and get to the light. So I, I have a hard time thinking that this pedestrian design is adequate or functional. And so those would be my two, uh, conditions would be to put a restriction. Was that five houses?
Nine.
Nine.
So I agree. I would agree to put a restriction on the nine houses. And I would urge the board to consider a condition to add one RRFB light to connect the thank you, the east to the west.
On Nebraska, is that where you're thinking of it?
Uh, no, south of Nebraska, actually. South of the final, south of the final roundabout.
I would, I would second that there needs to be some type of pedestrian crossing outside of the roundabout because I know there's pedestrian crossings in roundabouts, but for children, it's extremely dangerous. Even if cars are slowing down, they still are going through. And with high capacities of children needing to get to school, I, I would have to agree with Mayor Karstbeck about needing additional pedestrian crossing somewhere on that southern.
They're saying somewhere between roundabout three and the south.
Can we go to that map real quick? I don't want to guess. Thanks. Thanks. Good point.
And Mayor Karstbeck?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, staff has been drafting some potential conditions of approval for you during your deliberation. So should you want staff language to be added to any motion, we do have something that we can add.
Great.
We're, we're paying attention.
Thank you.
It's like right here.
So beyond, south of the final roundabout, I would try to connect the
versus farmstead second filing, not a part?
Yep, exactly. I would consider that. Also, I would think that cars are already slowing down to either hit the roundabout or accelerating to get away from the roundabout, but they wouldn't be coming at a speed that you'd regularly be on County Road one. And I totally agree with Trustee Albrecht and appreciate bringing it up that roundabouts are great for so many reasons, but to pedestrians, it's, it's difficult. Because when you go into a roundabout, you're always looking left. You're looking for the oncoming cars. No one's looking right. So those would be my, my two, or I'd agree with Mayor Protem on the first one. And I would add the RRFB next to the farmstead second filing, not apart area. Unfortunately, and I hate, hate conditions, but given Newell. Oh, I also agree with Administrator Kirk, or I would urge the board to consider that too, of tying it to the, what, where did you use the plats? For announcements by Newell of the noise? And I would certainly add by the gun club, riding my bike out there recently on a Saturday, it's real loud with the 12 gauge shotguns going off. And I agree totally that people will buy a house knowing that, but it will still complain. So at least we could have something to prove that, you know, we handed you a notice that this is going to be loud. And I appreciate, I want to tell the applicant, I appreciate adding Birmingham right there. I think that it'll help, but I still want to provide a notice. So those, I guess we have two out there, well, particularly, I guess, three. So the plats requirement of which would require the noise announcement, a restriction of one story on the nine, nine, uh, single family homes merely to the west of Newell Farm. And then one RRFB pedestrian crossing that is right by, for staff's, staff's qualification.
Is that something that we could do at, I think that Sugar Beet Lane, is that the one at the far south? Steve? Yeah. That intersection at Sugar Beet and, and I'm, I don't know if we can pull up a Google Earth map.
Is that the bigger one, Administrator Kirk?
Uh, that's the, that's the roadway that actually, that's the intersection, the four-way intersection at the southern end of the project. And, and I think if I show it to you on a map, maybe I'll just go to the laptop if that's okay with the mayor and trustees.
While we're waiting for, while we're waiting for Administrator Kirk, I do want to thank the applicant for the change on the removal of the three-story apartment buildings on that north end. I think the plan looks much more cohesive to Berthold. So thank you.
I think it's just be easier to see on an aerial map. As I'm looking at this in the context of the neighborhood to the west.
Well, we might not have this on an aerial map yet.
It approved. Uh, it is.
Oh, that's great.
You'll be able to kind of see how this all lays out.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
So you know, if you think about any kids that live in this area, the, the shortest distance between two points is, is probably going to be along the roadway, right? If you're here, you, you can't really cut through these. And it doesn't really make sense to try and cut through here. I mean, I guess you could, but.
Where are the, just to interrupt you, where are the, the trails?
The trails that, that you're seeing are roughly here.
Okay.
And so, you know, if you're coming from this area and anywhere to the north, it's going to make sense to just cross at Nebraska, I think. Or it might make sense to turn and go Sugar Beet in here because this road extends all the way over to the school site, as does Nebraska. And so in either case, I think that the, the kids that are most likely to cross in the middle, if you're thinking about, are, are the ones that will be in these homes here.
Oh, and those coming from the east going west. That's kind of where I think he's coming from.
Sure. If you're going west, if you're going west, you're not really going anywhere other than to the neighborhood. And so certainly, I mean, as, as I think Mayor Karstbeck appropriately pointed out, people cross the road all over the place where there's no crossings right now to get, you know, the shortest distance between two points. But the, the park itself, which I think will be an attractant, is, is up in this area, right? And so it's going to make sense if you're heading west to the park that you would come up and around through the roundabout. We could add RFBs to the roundabout. Uh, that we have our RFBs up at the Herem Point Roundabout, they, they function well. That's the rapid rectangular flashing beacons of pedestrian activated lights.
Are there trails on both sides of County Road one?
Yeah, there's, there's sidewalk or trail on both sides. And so, you know, it would be easy enough to, if, if you come out of one of these trails, let's say it's here kind of mid-block, it's a, it might be a couple of hundred feet this way, but you're talking, you're also talking about walking a very significant distance all the way to the school site. So a couple of hundred extra feet shouldn't be prohibitive in that sense. And again, I think the way the streets lay out to the west, it's going to naturally push traffic here and here. And again, I think those, those trails will primarily be utilized by folks that live in the central area here.
How wide are the pocket park trails?
How wide are they?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have that up.
Six feet.
Six feet. Okay. And then on Nebraska, we're talking about four foot sidewalks, right?
No, no. Uh, our, our minimum standard is larger than four feet. I think on Nebraska, they're eight, four, 10. Yeah. And that was back on, actually, I think I closed this out. Let's see. Skip down, back down here to this trail exhibit. Uh, that, that's what, what Mr. Schreuer is saying, something I was thinking also during the construction design, I think is a reasonable suggestion that one of the things that we can do. Nope, that didn't work at all, did it?
Slide 28, Administrator Kirk.
Thank you. Uh, is, is landscaping and fencing that kind of force pedestrians to walk down to either crossing? And again, whoop, people love to jump fences too. We, we found that out at Berthold Reservoir. We got fences up that say no fishing on the east side. People hop that all the time and go fish. Uh, so they have to get right out of there. So people will still jump fencing and go through landscaping, but I think there are some other ways to kind of direct pedestrian traffic to the crossings where we think they're most safe.
So the sidewalks going north and south on Wall County Road one, they're going to be several feet off the, there's going to be a green belt and then sidewalk, correct? So are you suggesting that possibly put like a split rail fence like curb side? Just to keep them inside the green belt? Instead of doing RFBs, just require split rail fence or something?
Direction.
To keep you from wanting to jump the curb?
Steve, there is an exhibit in here that has the, oh, it's on your slides. Yeah. That have the size of the trails. That's what I was looking for. Here we go. So along Cannonline Road, you can see that darker purple trail is a 10 foot wide plain regional trail. And then and then the light blue is a eight foot concrete trail.
Okay. I don't want to belabor the port, point here. I, I really think it should be where it's at if there's a trail going through there. I think it would help keep it uninterrupted too. And just personal thoughts here, I, I, there's areas in town that do have those to try to direct you one way. And some of them do, uh, some of them don't. I mean, a rail, a fence might do that, but if we move, it does kind of frustrate me when we have a good system and then suddenly it's interrupted. I felt like if we could keep this going, I, I just still don't see the downside of keeping it where it's at. I mean, I feel like at Sugar Beet or the other big ones, they'll have crossings no matter what, in my opinion, right? Being
Not necessarily. I mean, the Nebraska roundabout will have obviously pedestrian crossings. There's pedestrian refuges in the islands. Uh, that's the same at Tenderfoot. The intersection of the south, because it is not stop controlled for north-south traffic, wouldn't typically have a, a dedicated crosswalk there. That said, that might be a reasonable place to put a, a signal, a pedestrian signal in crosswalks.
Cause that's actually going right to the school, Sugar Beet.
Yep. Yeah. Uh, but again, I think, I don't know, is that mile or half mile?
Put it here, put the crossing here? Cause you're saying there's no crossing there.
Yeah. Yep.
But there should be. But you could put your little blinky like RFP there.
I, okay, my personal opinion is like, I don't, even if we tried to put it down low, it's just thinking like a kid, you're going to find the path of going to
Well, and it looks like there's a berm in the middle of County Road one, two as well. So crossing the street and then crossing the berm and then crossing the street. You see there's like a little berm in there all the way down that kind of divides the road? Looks like. Is, is County Road one divided by a berm?
Uh, by a center median?
Yeah.
Uh, there is a portion of it as you approach the roundabout.
It looks like it.
Um, so one of the things that I think we also need to be mindful of.
So that'll help slow traffic down a little bit.
This is downhill, um, up and downhill as you head down towards the river, right? Because the Little Thompson River is just a very short ways south of us. And so I think we need to evaluate site distances when you're coming up and down a hill to some of these intersections and making sure that they're highly visible, that they're safe for pedestrian crossings. I, I very much understand what Mayor Karstbeck's saying. And I think I understand the point of trying to keep trails uninterrupted as we can. In a lot of ways, these are not part of the regional trail system. I will, I will point out the regional trail system that we have actually runs east-west through Pioneer Park. And actually it might be easier again to show you on the map. Uh, but it runs through the northern end of the property, uh, up along this, this stretch. And so, uh, these are, while they are designated as trails, they're primarily pedestrian crush, uh, pedestrian crossings and connections for the neighborhood. And again, yes, kids are going to want to walk and ride their bikes to school. Cannonline Road is going to be a, an arterial roadway. It's going to carry a significant amount of vehicular traffic in the future, beyond what it does today. And so it's going to function very similarly to Berthold. And so it's going to function very similarly to Berthod Parkway or to um, maybe even Highway 56 in some ways, not, not quite that substantial, but. If we were to put mid block crossing, we would want a, a very significant signal. And that's something that we could. The town might choose to put in, but again, these trails are not part of our regional trail system. These are kind of internals of the neighborhood and. Connect you to those regional trails that the town. Has planned, but this is not on the south end part of the regional trail east west.
Okay. Um, I'll point out to the board that with uh, the Prairie Star Development connecting to um. Where McDonald's was, that was actually a board condition. I just see how much that RRFB gets used. Uh, I think having somewhere lower than the roundabout makes sense to me. I'm not a fan of adding any kind of interruption to a trail to get people to move, but. If, if there's any support for just an RFB period, and that's the compromise that we bring it. Try to screwed it down, then I guess I'm okay with that.
I would say definitely at Sugar Beet Lane, definitely have a crossing there. But I think with the berm in the middle of Will County Road One, that'll help defer hopefully some mid crossing.
I would just submit that we entrust the staff and the traffic experts to locate a safer pedestrian crossing. That is not the roundabouts because I think they've, they've studied this and they have the wherewithal, but I, I think. To the mayor's point, point, we need to find that alternative crossing point and add the RFBs. Um, but I do think staff and the experts can locate the right. Uh, place for that. Um, and the timing might. Be more appropriate when the school builds out and I'm not sure when that's going to take place. So.
We might be flying hover cars by then, so.
And the school will more than likely have a crossing guard at, at one of those intersections to try to force kids to as well.
It's possible. Yeah. I mean, again, it's a pretty long walk, but there are kids that are definitely going to walk and ride their bikes from the west side to the east side. I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable too soon. So.
I think keeping them safe at the beginning would be ideal.
Okay, I uh. Is there any comfort in leaving it where it's at? Is there, would anyone kind of? Second, what I'm trying to see, would leaving where it's at? Doesn't seem like, okay, would there be any support for moving it to Sugar Beet and having an RFB down there? Or actually, I like yours, but adding, just leaving it up to staff. Okay.
Can we leave it open?
Leaving it up to, to the south here. Yeah. Um, I. We got encouraged walking any, any way we can. You know, the district has already talked about how more parents than ever are driving their kids to school. Um. So even if it's not used, but it's the appearance of working and that'll encourage a, a parent to let their kid walk. It's uh, better than right when this goes in to start receive complaints and I don't know. I think there were $15,000 for CDOT to do it. I don't know what it costs for ours to do it, but.
About the same now.
That's a small investment compared to uh, what it can offer. Okay. So it sounds like that's okay. We'll leave that up to staff. Um, the second next condition. Uh, proposed would be a re- height restriction on the nine single family units. Is there any support for that?
So I'm commenting on it.
Yeah.
You know, there's so many homes in this development that maybe there's no difference between six and nine. Um, but three of them are right in front of a detention pond. So I'm not sure why we would need those three to be single family. So I could understand the six again, in the scope of how big this is, it would seem like six would not be a big burden. On the applicant.
Any character to that since that was here?
Um. I would just recommend for consistency, keeping the block the same height along with it is southwest. The main views we're trying to preserve on this site that I feel would be detriment. Detrimentally impacted by having two stories. So if you're way over on the other side of the site or anywhere along that southern line. You're going to be impacted by those three, I would feel like. That's my opinion.
Yeah, it, and again, to me, in the scope of this project, this, the nine is, it's not a big number to begin with. So. And I, I do think. The house right across the street is a two story. So I'm not sure what you gain, but if, if you think you do. It's not a, it's, it's not.
I think feathering.
A big deal.
You know, the actual elevation of. The products on that side of the site would be very helpful to mitigating any kind of negative impact.
And the townhouses are two story, right?
Yeah, but again, you're mainly looking to the southwest. It's less impacted in my opinion on the north end by the townhomes. That makes sense because you've got less of the site. Yes, looking west or southwest from that location.
So. I don't know what homes are being built on here, but if it was, I'm just using this example, it was a Toll Brothers, right? They'd have five models you choose from. And so every model in here is a two story, I'm assuming. I don't know that, but I'm assuming. So now we've created. The developer having to come up with another model.
The applicant mentioned that he was developing at least one option or no? Am I incorrect on that? So there's no one story option? Okay, I stand corrected.
And is there any regu- um, any, any restrictions on if you take 50% of the square footage away? Is, is he still compliant with our other? Regulations that have to be X number of square feet? Again, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to think through his lens a little bit.
I, I guess that would kind of be outside the discussion of tonight, I feel like.
Administrator Kirk, can you speak to that? A smaller footprint? How does that affect fixture or any kind of fees or anything? Or does that?
Requirements.
Requirements on, on the applicant. Does that add any burden or subtract any?
Square footage would be cut in half. So there's no regulate, there's no minimum square, I guess the best way to say it is there's no minimum square foot requirement.
Uh, no, we don't have a minimum square foot requirement.
Okay.
I, I think in also potentially unintended consequence of putting a single story ranch, ranches tend to have a larger footprint. So in other words, that house may be shifted back or take up more of the backyard than a two story and actually move the dwelling closer to the property line. So that's, I, I don't know what the, what the footprint of these houses are going to be, but that's. You're essentially just moving a one story closer to the property line, which is going to obstruct potentially some view as well. So. Something to think about there that if you're trying to create a buffer between the park and the residences, you actually may be reducing the buffer between the dwellings and the property line.
They could donate the nine lots to Habitat, have them build their single family, their single story house.
I, let's stick to the condition. Um, good points. Thank you and Mayor Proten. Um, so let's just. I'm just going to go down and, and we can poll on this of uh. Would we, is there support to um. Support with this condition as is of uh, reducing it to a single story? Um, of all night? Or do you want to withdraw that or whatever?
No, uh, I, I would like to hear uh, staff's language on. Uh, the conditions that we've kind of discussed. Maybe we can go from there.
So far, not the nine one? Hmm? Do you want to? Okay, go ahead. Let's go ahead and hear, man.
Sure. Um, Mayor Karstek, members of the town trustees, there are three conditions that we've heard you discussing this evening. The first one is in regards to the nine residential lots and limiting the height. Um, staff has drafted that the nine residential lots west of the detention pond. And the future Newell Farm property shall be single story. A note shall be placed on the neighborhood master plan, preliminary plat and final plat indicating such height restriction. That's condition of approval one. Would you like me to read condition of approval number two?
Yes, please.
May as well, yep.
A safe location for a pedestrian crossing of County Line Road One. At or near Sugar Beet Lane shall be provided and indicated on the preliminary plat and the final plat. Fencing and landscape design shall be planned to direct pedestrian traffic.
Okay, just for my clarification, I, I wanted to make particular when I asked the board that those be an RFB. Are we still under that impression? Cause I think we need to add that specific verbiage. I mean, a safe crossing is very subjective and that could just be. Paint on the ground.
Exploration of an RRFD.
They're so low, I would just prefer to require it. That's all right with the board.
I'll support that.
Okay, thanks. Could we add RFB in particular to that?
Yes, a safe location for a RFB pedestrian crossing and then the condition remains the same as read first.
Okay, thanks. Uh, oh, and that's. The requirement of the announcement for uh, noise.
Yes, and then the third, a third should be a note shall be placed on the neighborhood master plan. Preliminary plan and final plat noticing future property owners of potential noise on adjacent properties. Such as Newell Farm and the existing gun club.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, and I do want to go back just so the board has a chance to poll on. The first uh, condition, which would be the nine house. Nine houses to do single story. Um, sounded like there was support. Do we have? Four, there's only six of us, so uh. Yeah, we'd still need four. Are there four people that support that?
I'm supportive of the language proposed.
My preference would be no, but to move this forward, I would support it.
One, two, and I supported. Is there another?
I'm supporting.
All right. Okay, we got four. Those are good conditions as it stands. Would trustees like to? Any other points? Add, subtract, anything else? Okay. Before we vote, I, yeah, I just do want to say this is not ideal for um. I think people that are here for Newell Farm, um, wanting a chance to actually to discuss that before this. Certainly this is not ideal for the applicant that's been here seven times and kind of hit and get with conditions. I do not like thinking on the spot like this. But in the interest of, of getting this through, hopefully we're all a little, the compromise a little bit here. Um. Get it done with. So thank you, thank you to everyone that uh, showed up tonight. Anything else? Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call vote? Oh, no, we got it.
Motion. Got to read the whole agenda, don't you?
Or that?
Got to read the whole.
Yep, thank you. Anyone like to uh?
Move.
Move to uh, actually do a wording on that. We have to. Uh, no, sir.
We're doing the first one?
Yep.
A board member or, no, see, I move to approve resolution 2025 dash 13, a resolution of the town of Berthod. Board of trustees approving the neighborhood master plan for the development known as Farmstead Third filing development of the town of Berthod with the three conditions. Amendment state that staff made. And then we repeat those conditions.
That's when staff added.
Staff has it. Okay.
They read them out. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Trustee Hardy has moved. Trustee Wing has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Wing?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Mayor Karstek?
Yes. All right, the resolution has been approved. Let's move on to uh, motion to approve ordinance 1354. Would anyone like to move on that?
I will make the motion. I move to approve ordinance 1354 and ordinance of the town of Berthod, board of trustees, amending the zoning map of the town of Berthod. To rezone the Farmstead Third filing property previously zoned to planned unit development to suburban residential. Suburban, commercial and urban residential districts.
I'll second.
All right, Trustee Sorcelli has moved on ordinance 1354. Trustee Hardy has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on that? Thank you.
Mayor Proten Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Karstek?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone that's here for the Farmstead Third filing. Is the, is the board good to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, I did say I would move up items six and seven. Uh, both uh, have requested. Keep doing this too, but. Okay, so let's do that. So we'll start off with uh. Is Hinkle and Company here? Thank you. Okay, if you'd like to, if we could please come forward for a annual presentation of our audited financial statements.
Mayor, just so you know, we do have several people in the audience for a number of stuff in the graffiti art program. I don't know if we're able to address that. Sooner rather than not, but.
Thank you. I think we can do, Hinkle, it's just the amount of questions we have, but last year this was.
I will be sure. Are you ready? Yes, my name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle and Company CPAs, and we do the annual audit of the financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2024. We start off our audit by updating our understanding of the town's internal accounting controls. Uh, we look at cash disbursements, cash receipts, as well as the payroll cycles. Primarily, we're looking for what we call a segregation of duties. Transactions typically take three steps, the initiation, the approval and the recording of that transaction. And we want to ensure that there is at least two or more people involved in those three steps. Uh, that provides the best level of internal controls. Uh, we also identify what we call control features where the approval of invoices prior to payment, approval of account coding. Prior to poaching the general ledger. And we test those control features of the internal controls. Um, through sample testing as well as throughout our entire audit. We do this work for two reasons. First is we are looking for any significant efficiencies. Or material weaknesses in internal controls. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal accounting controls. That would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that could result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our analysis and all of our testing, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. In the internal control structure. That's the answer that you're looking for. We also do that to help us design our tests of the actual audit, uh, financial statements. We primarily use what we call substantive testing, which is test of details and analytic review. Test of details is pretty much what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances. We look at the underlying transactions and we compare those two supporting documentation such as invoices, deposits. Contracts, agreements to verify that the transactions are recorded correctly in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Then we also use analytic review procedures where we pick, compare the current year, the prior year, current year to budget. Various relationships within the balance sheet to the income statement. And we're looking for relationships that we either didn't expect or can't explain. And if we have any of those, we do more test of details with the accounts that are involved in that. The end result of all of our audit work is the audit opinion. Yours is technically referred to as an unmodified opinion. In layman's term, that's a clean opinion states that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. And that's also the answer that you want to hear. Unlike last year, uh, based upon advice of council, we did add a management's discussions and analysis. To the financial statements and therefore we have removed that exception of paragraph within the audit opinion. Um, so we did do that along with uh, management's help. Uh, finally, we issue a uh, required communication letter. We're required to communicate in writing if certain events occur during the course of the audit. And we have nothing negative to report in that letter. There were no disagreements with management. There were no difficulties in the course of the audit. And we did not have any errors in the books and records that required audit adjustments to. Be made in order to be correct in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. So all in all, it was a very good audit. Probably the most important thing that I like to communicate to uh, council members is that. Throughout the course of the audit, we felt like we had open transparency. Everything that we asked for was provided to us in a timely fashion. And we were not denied access to any information or any underlying source documents. Uh, so I think that's very important. Like to commence Cindy and Oliver's staff. Uh, we are in addition to her daily job. And we asked a lot of questions and we asked for a lot of information and everything was provided to us in a timely fashion. And once you all uh, uh, accept the audit report, we will be filing it with the state. Uh, before the 31st of July, which is the state owner's deadline. And you all will be in compliance with the state requirement. Any questions?
Trustees' questions?
Couple.
Go ahead, Trustee Wing.
Were you on site?
Yes.
How long?
Uh, a couple of three days. Um, we do a lot of our work remotely with the data being transferred electronically. But it just makes things move faster if we come out and answer questions and, and look through documents while we're on site.
How many people?
Um, we had.
Two. Okay. And then um. Are there, are there norms or thresholds or things you look for like 137 million dollars in cash? Are there, are there things where you give guidance to the town on, hey, based on towns of this size? Um, this was out of the parameter of the norm. Not that it's anything wrong. I'm just wondering if you give any guidance on things like that.
We, we don't give guidance on financial analysis like. Your fund balance isn't large enough in relationship to your annual expenses. Or you've got too much cash in the bank. It ought to be in colo trust or something like that. We do give advice on. Um, accounting transactions and processes of things that might make life easier for them. Or if we see a potential error, well, you, you need this approved before you're recorded or something like that. So we. Our recommendations are more accounting processes, procedures. Our recommendations are more accounting processes, procedures than financial analysis.
Okay, and and how long have you been doing this for the town?
Uh, I think we're about four years, five years, forty-five years, something like that.
Okay.
Not too long.
Very comprehensive. I mean, this was, this was pretty detailed, so.
We pretty much drill into every single balance sheet account that the town has a year in and look at all of the underlying transactions. Every single cash bank account, every accounts receivable account, accounts payable account, we look at subsequent disbursements uh after the end of the year, to make sure that nothing was missed. So, yeah, it's pretty exhaustive.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions? Well, this is great. Sounds like even even better than last year's, which was great, so.
We added the M D and A, yes, sir.
Congratulations to finance director Cindy, very top-notch work here. Um, and I just want to second the amount of detail that goes into this. Um, as far as audits go, getting into this government work, I had no idea before that the amount of checks and balances there are, that I wish we were on a lot of things and uh. So it's great to see that government has that, including getting called for interviews, just in case there is uh something with staff that might be um triggering a red flag, but uh. It's awesome, so thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks for the detail.
Great.
Uh, would a trustee like to move? On, move to accept the two thousand and twenty-four audited financial statements as presented?
I'll make the motion to accept the twenty twenty-four audited financial statements as presented.
I'll second. All right, trustee Brody has moved on the audited financials, uh trustee Hardy has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
Yes.
Mayor Karasback?
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the other one I did move up was the uh.
Graffiti art.
Thank you, graffiti art program request, and uh, thank you to those for the short-term rentals here tonight. Uh, there was a request. It is really just totally a gamble, um, but if I, if I do this, um, who, who's going to get offended? I know people always at the last hour, so. Uh, we'll move to uh the graffiti art program request, uh introduced by administrator Kirk.
Hey, Mayor Karasback, uh, this is something I've been working with trustee Albrecht and and others in the community on. Um, it was originally brought forward um through trustee Albrecht. I think there's some opportunities to work with some of our local partners on uh graffiti art program for kids who have an interest in that kind of art and those kind of opportunities. Uh, what we've been considering is a retaining wall at the Sunoco building, um, that is adjacent to Cornerstone Cafe, New Freedom Church. Either on the, what would be the east wall of the parking lot at the Sunoco building or on the north wall. Um, there is some graffiti there now, um, that was done with with permission unintentionally, I think perhaps, but um. But I think there is some opportunity to to expand that program. Uh, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it to you tonight, we had a meeting with uh our partners at Wildfire Arts, who, as you hopefully recall is our contract arts provider for our recreation programs about creating a program through Wildfire, uh, that that the town could help to facilitate, maybe even provide a little bit of additional funding for supplies and materials. They could bring in artists, teach the kids about graffiti art. We could kind of segment up the wall, they could review our proposals and then allow kids to both practice, but then also to demonstrate their their artwork. That is a, is a, that could be a little bit of a time-consuming process to put a program like that together, and and there's a desire to uh get things moving a little bit quicker than that, so I wanted to come to you and see what your thoughts were about uh doing it in a less, maybe a little less structured and formal way initially, um, but with, but with town support as appropriate, so. I don't know if trustee Albrecht wanted to address anything beyond that. I'm happy to uh kind of step aside and let her share her thoughts as well, and then you probably would like to hear from the community as well, it's as part of that conversation.
Appreciate that. Trustee Albrecht?
Well, thank you, administrator Kirk. You've been very gracious in this process and kind of figuring out the right channels. I think that what I saw was, I, I'd heard that New Freedom was wanting art projects on that wall and was under the impression that it did belong to them, and so I was trying to help essentially bridge a gap because it is property of the town. And they are the ones who are adjacent to it, so they see it and it's, you know, used by their guests, so it is important to them what's on that wall. And then um, what I'd mentioned, the, the issue to administrator Kirk, he was, you know, very wise to bring up Wildfire Arts and how amazing that program is, and when I approached Wildfire, they actually have uh amazing staff onsite and artists who are muralists and graffiti artists, connoisseurs. And who have amazing talents for teaching and uh creating art that's a community-centric piece. And so when I talked to them, I actually got really excited and when we met with um administrator Kirk, it, it seems like there's interest from the staff level to kind of just essentially give rights over to that wall to be used as an art piece. And it, we are under the impression it could be temporary because there might be some repairs needed to the wall, or it might come down if Sunoco designs requires to remove the wall, so I think all the parties involved are aware that that could happen, and they just want an opportunity to to create art with kids. And especially because there's art being misused in our community, I see a need to maybe hone some skills and actually train them to to take pride in their community and create art that's actually a gift to the community. And then it also creates a kind of code of ethics that if you're going to participate in our project, you're going to help in the community to direct people to do the things properly and have your art displayed in a way that's honorable and a gift to the community instead of a detriment, so. It's new to me, graffiti art, just so you know, this is very challenging for me, but my son has stretched me and taught me the, the value of being artistic and that, that skate culture we've kind of created in Berthud, maybe. Um, we didn't realize we were going to create with all our amazing skate parks, but we did, and and perhaps we can channel that into a really positive project that the youth can be involved in, and not only the youth, but have some adults who are trained with art and as well as our local law enforcement to come alongside them and build positive relationships in our government, to build relationships with the kids and show that we don't have to be uh contrary, that it's like we're, they're part of our community too. And so I really want to hear from New Freedom because this was really their brainchild. I just was in the, in the way and helping, hopefully. And so hopefully they can share with you a little more why they wanted it to happen.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, would a representative uh from New Freedom or, I should say, the ones that initiated this?
And Wildfire's here as well.
Wildfire too. Would, could we have both come up at the same time? And we can just go back to back? Uh, please go first.
Okay, I'll go first. Okay, well. It uh, it is interesting because years ago we had somebody come and did some graffiti on the wall and, and we left it. And we left it on purpose because we wanted the kids that had done it to come back. And, but none of the kids of the community narked them off or. And so, yeah, so um, we sat there for a little while, and then we were approached by um, by Ben and Brody about having the opportunity to do some more art on that same wall. And as you know, we're an outreach center. And um, that's, it, we really, really tried to focus on our youth of the community along with our elderly, but um, with everything that goes on with that, and we were just really excited that that happened, so we brought them along with them, we brought into uh the police department, um, Derek, I believe, was the officer. And we even already have a case number so that people, if they see the kids doing it, they would, they would call in, and we already called in the case number, so the kids won't get in trouble in the first place, but we support this uh one hundred percent. And we're hoping that we can get it going as quick as possible, we get the kids going on this and and be able to show it throughout the town to maybe do it in other places, I mean. Um, may hit it right on the head, uh, trustee may hit it right on the head of uh what we're trying to do with the youth, and uh. I just also want to say that you guys did a very good job tonight. You really have to look at uh the whole community and everything that pertains to it. I just want to throw that in there. So, and you, your job's not easy, so good job. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that in. Um, but yeah, we're one hundred percent on board for, especially with Wildfire being able to supervise everything, so. We're hoping we can get going soon.
About wildfire representatives. You don't have to, but if you'd like to, great.
Hi.
Hi.
I have copies of a proposal if anybody would like.
Oh, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
If you could just hand them to me, then we could just, she can divvy them out. Pass them down.
Um, and just in doing this, when we were approached with the project, I had talked a lot about a project like this that would appeal to youth that maybe were turning down the wrong path. Um, again, with that misuse of art in the community, we noticed that too, so being able to kind of come together and uh think of a proposal project to be able to involve more of the community more positively. People have to hide. Yeah, it would really be like a heart-stone project to be able to teach kids skills and get them involved with local authority, um, and give them an outlet to be able to do art. That was, I, I went down a similar path when I was a teenager of like going the wrong way about it, and now being able to work with the town and represent Wildfire, represent the youth. Um, I wish I could go back and tell myself. But I can't, so telling, being able to teach other kids that they have that pathway and they have that support um as artists. There's a lot of emotion and shame that can sometimes come about and develop in a bad ways when we want to take it the opposite approach, um. And in terms of that proposal, I think for now, we were looking at just initial approval to be able to begin work on the wall. We can do this for free. We can do this with materials that Wildfire already has available. In the future, if funding needed to be requested from the town, that would be a separate draft, um, and it would be broad, again. But for now, yeah, we're looking to get started. All the kids are excited. I'm super excited to take it on if we can get to it. Um, and just start small scale and build fundamental skills with our youth in the town, so. Hope that it grows and spreads to the point that we can get more involvement, so.
Okay. Um, the audience does not have the benefit of these papers, right? Guess I'm not.
And we did discuss um at our meeting and and later on with Wildfire and New Freedom, that this could just be kind of a preliminary um approval for them to start working on it, learn some skills, and then grow it into a more comprehensive project, where it's an actual mural that's um slated out with different people, and each artist has to submit their art to be on the wall so that it's not obscene or or indecent, and New Freedom would be really tied in with that too, because they have to see that art every day and and their churchgoers and restaurant goers, so we'd want to make sure that it's, it's art that's well done and also appropriate, so. Each art piece would be approved through Wildfire, but I think in, in time, they may have a funding request for more supplies to do more, more projects that are similar to this, it'd just be kind of a preliminary, and I don't know if Bennett wanted to say anything about, from the youth perspective. Did you want to say anything? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Is there multiple use? There's multiple. Uh, let me just open it up to the public comment, Bennett, and then. Uh, so let's do that, yeah, open it up to the public, please.
Hello, my name is Bennett, uh, Sorcelli. I am one of the youth, the community, uh, community that loves art, graffiti, um. Expression, expression is one of my favorite words, one with passion, um. Because, especially in graffiti, in the graffiti world, there, um, the reason for it is expression. And uh, that's usually misunderstood about it, is that it's just vandalism. Everybody does it, hates the government and everything, but for me, I do it because I just do it on paper. I do it because I love the color, I love the art, I love the expression, the passion for it. And so, um. This project of the wall wouldn't just be so I could practice, wouldn't just be I could, so I could uh do my art. It would be so that kids in the future, anybody in the future, any artist um in the future would be able to express. Um, and whether that's on the wall, anywhere else in Berthud, for the community. Um, I think every town deserves a chance to have art, street art, you know, whatever. Um, and so the goal, my goal of this project originally was to get not just Berthud, but the community, everybody in the town on the side of graffiti and uh my art form, so that kids in the future and my friends, me, um, anybody could uh express the way they want to. And uh, this wall would be the first step to that, so I want to thank Wildfire Arts, um. I want to thank the town for this opportunity, that's on board, and uh anybody, any adults that have come on my side to help me do this project, whether it's possible or not, I want to thank you for this opportunity. And uh, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Is there anyone else in the uh audience tonight that wishes to speak to you? Mural? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions? Board? I have a question regarding, so um, thank you, this is, this is very inclusive, and a lot of this makes sense with this document. Um, just, I'm, I'm happy to see that this will require just a little bit of a you need approval, it looks like, from two project supervisors. Uh, the design is well-planned and in line with the project objectives. And then, so I'm looking at project objectives, and um the first one, provide a space where young adults and community members can collaboratively design, draft, and complete a mural for New Freedom Church with local artists and mentors. So I guess I was under the impression that this was a town-owned? Or is this New, New Freedom owned?
The wall is town-owned.
Okay, that, I would encourage that. I, I love New Freedom, so this is not anything with that by any means, but um, is there a reason that that was in there?
Well, the wall is town-owned, but it's New Freedom's. Like their property is, is looking directly at it, so it would be for their benefit on, on some level. If that makes any sense.
Okay, my only worry here, and again, I love New Freedom, I just um, being on a government property, I, I hate to limit what you, whatever, art, art is so subjective. But I guess uh any kind of faith-based things I'd, I'd have a concern with. Was there an idea or thought behind that at all?
I don't think it was intended to be faith-based, honestly. I don't think any of the graffiti that I've seen from the kids that are, are drawing, it's, it's more abstract anyway. I can't make sense of it, so.
Aaron, Aaron saying he's just trying, or pastor Aaron's trying to say there's just not going to be anything obscene on there, which I think makes sense.
I think the goal is just color.
Cool.
I think that's, they want color on their life.
Well, would we mind, I mean, if this is going to go out, could we say for the community?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, any other questions? Comments?
Uh, comment?
Yeah, please.
I just think this is a great opportunity. Uh, you know, we all complain about how much time young people spend indoors playing video games, watching TV, and I think the benefit of getting them outdoors, I mean, look at the investment the town has put into their master plan of trying to create a trail and walkable. This plays right into that, get kids out, doing things positive for the community, and I think it's a great idea.
Other comments?
Um. I'll maybe make some comments. Um. This is an interesting item. Um. To the adults that participated in this, I would advise using better judgment before initiating a project like this on government property. Um, that said. Um. I, I am all for more art in this community. I think this is a great outlet. I think um this proposal um meets the standards, particularly that Wildfire will be supervising this project. And so I would generally support this idea. Going forth with it, um, obviously, art is very subjective. I look at this as a pilot program. Um, so I would advise if we go forth with this, that participants are very mindful of this art form, which obviously has a lot of preconceived notions, and placing that in the community that has those notions about it. I would advise them to just be very considerate of what the community will see when this art goes up, should it go up.
Other comments? Other comment?
I just, I, I'm very impressed with the speakers that came up and the passion you have and expressing yourself. I think it's awesome. Um, I think trustee Brody, his comments also, um, right on, right, and people and and uh may thanks uh for getting involved in this and and spearheading it with them a little bit, so. No, I think it's, I think it's great. I like creativity. Um, and it's uh, sounds like there's going to be the appropriate supervision, so.
Sounds good to me. I would just like to, I, I'm really for this, and I, I am more so tonight after hearing about it, so I'm glad this became an agenda item. But there's going to be supervision over this. Berthud is really lacking um any kind of art program, and uh, I know trustee Hardy's been pushing the community for Baha and other kind of arts projects. Uh, so to get youth involved in this, I, I think this is a great pilot. Um, Bennett, you were very well spoken and and um.
Absolutely.
Was that? Oh, sorry. Um, no, so I won't belabor this anymore. I also just want to say I I think it's a little reasonable that that there might not been known that this was government property at the time. Um, so uh anyway, I uh yeah, I would encourage and it sounds like there'll be supervision over this. Uh, but also that a little flexibility. I mean, some art's challenging, but um it'll be good for the teens to see if this isn't there, kids aren't not that they're not gonna tag, they're just gonna do that illegally. So this gives them an area. And if it is illegally, uh, gives law enforcement the ability to enforce not only the graffiti, but then to say, hey, if you want to keep doing this, there's a government area with oversight that can do that. And finally, I just love to add, um, again, this is a pilot. I was at our mobility hub at I twenty five over the weekend and um, this is no fault of anyone on the board. This is a C dot issue, but it is just so Spartan inside there. It is so depressing with concrete everywhere, a giant hallway. It's just maybe I'm going too far on this, but if you go out there, it's really depressing. Um, so if there is, if this turned out great, I mean, and we had wildfire engaged and we could actually bring C dot over and just say, hey, you know, look what they did on our government property. Would there be ability to add a mural and you know, um, really tasteful graffiti to to the mobility hub, uh, which I believe they own, uh, that might be an option. So to expand it. So and growing up, there was murals elsewhere. Some of them are gone, but um, yeah, I think this is great. So. Anything else? Trustee's anyone?
Good.
Which is I will have stayed in just since because my son is involved. Um, but I did want to just clarify that new freedom obviously thought they were they were completely under the impression by officials at the time that the wall belonged to them. They would have, I know their character. They would have never have um imposed upon any anything that was town related without asking. So I'm glad that we had the conversation and found out who it belonged to so that we could proceed properly. Um, and then um, gosh, there's one more thing I was gonna say. Nope, it's gone.
Oh, it's fine. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. If I could just add, I want to do like new freedom. Um, for the audience, I I don't attend new freedom. Uh, but just for what you guys do for the community, what you do for the meetings with the chiefs and the mayor, what you guys had did last weekend for uh historical society, having to close their meeting in the park and you guys offered up the amphitheater that which was packed. There was no room in there. Miranda stayed late to offer food. Um, seniors being able to stay there for free. So I I just want to say thank you so much for everything you do. And you guys are striking again, allowing this outside. So thank you. All right, uh, it seems like we're supportive. I don't know if we have to move on this.
Give town direction.
In informational update. Okay, so can is there a right to direct staff to work with wildfire and new freedom representatives to uh make this mural or this graffiti um wall a possibility or make it happen, I should think.
Yeah, it's um keep looking.
That work for you as far as direction, Minister Kirk?
Mm hmm.
Pretty clear? Okay.
Um, if I could just add one more thing, just uh to ensure that we've got supplemental information out to the community that this is going on.
Yeah, we'll promote. We'll make it clear to everybody that this is an approved kind of art program.
Okay.
We've we've talked about signage. We'll do some social media posts. I think it'll be pretty, hopefully, I mean, not everybody else.
It'll be good advertising too. Yeah, bringing up kids that might not know about it otherwise. Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Okay, uh, let's now uh go backtrack here and we'll do a short term rental regulations in introduction by our plant uh planning manager, Tom Hillenbrand.
Uh, Mayor Karrespek, before we proceed, could I extend the meeting uh till ten thirty or sooner?
Excellent. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Good evening once again. Sorry, last item this evening uh will be the short term rental uh proposed short term rental code amendment. So as you all may recall, the Town Board of Trustees adopted short term rental regulations or ordinance thirteen forty two series of twenty twenty four on August thirteenth of twenty twenty four. The regulations went into effect one month later on September twenty third, twenty twenty four. Process to develop the short term rental regulations included a community questionnaire, special interest group discussions, extensive research regarding in uh industry best practices and multiple work sessions with the Town Board of Trustees. And staff produced the first draft of regulations following a work session in November of twenty twenty three. A second draft following a work session in January twenty twenty four and a final draft following a work session in March of twenty twenty four. Each draft incorporated uh both community and Town Board of Trustees feedback. Upon adopting the regulations, staff hosted two public webinars. The intent of the webinars was to go over the short term rental business license approval process, including requirements and expectations. The recording of the webinar was available and is still available on the Planning Department website for those interested in applying for a license. On average, applicants are completing the application process in twenty five to thirty days. So as part of the work sessions, extensive discussion was made uh regarding separation requirements between approved short term rentals as a mechanism to manage the saturation of short term rentals in neighborhood environments. Through the research process, staff found that this was a common practice in some communities within Colorado to manage saturation. While the separation requirement could help manage the number of short term rental or of approved short term rentals in neighborhood, the requirement could also create some challenges. After evaluation and considerable consideration of differing separation distances, including two hundred, four hundred, five hundred and six hundred feet, and this is reflected on the map shown on the screen, the planning commission and Town Board of Trustees moved to adopt a two hundred foot separation requirement between approved short term rentals. Since implementing the regulations in September twenty twenty four, the town has received twelve short term rental uh business license applications. Of the twelve short term rental applications, eight have been approved and four have been denied due to not meeting the current separation requirement. The four that have been denied are all located in the same neighborhood, which is the Herring Lakes Town Homes. No other short term rental applications elsewhere in the town have been denied due to not meeting the separation requirements or any other reason for that matter. Since implementing the regulations in September, the town has received consistent feedback from one community member opposing the separation requirement and requesting its removal or requesting an exception to the separation requirement. This individual was one of the four applicants that was not approved due to the separation requirement in the town homes there at Herring Lakes. Based upon direction by the Town Board, the current two hundred foot separation requirement is being proposed for removal from the short term rental regulations. A right line format of the short term rental regulations reflecting this one change has uh has been attached to your staff report. No other changes are proposed to the short term rental regulations at this time. The planning commission heard the proposed amendment at their meeting on July tenth, twenty twenty five. They did have extensive deliberation and considered the value of the requirement. The planning commission unanimously uh recommends denial of the proposed code amendment to the short term rental regulations. Um, and as a reminder, this public hearing this evening is simply to introduce you to the proposed uh modifications to the code. You will not make a motion this evening. That will occur at our second reading, which will be on August twelfth, I believe. Yes, August twelfth, twenty twenty five. Um, so again, no need to make a motion this evening. And of course, as always, I am available for any questions. Um, and I I do ask that keeping in mind that we can address any questions following any of the public testimony this evening. Um, and of course, we can clarify, um, you know, if there's any facts or if you need reminder again on the short term rental regulations process and how we got here. I'm happy to provide whatever necessary uh clarifications you may need. And that is it.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
So so was anything recommended besides the two hundred? I mean, do they that's are they saying we'd like three hundred or that's just not part of the discussion?
No, the discussion um has been a request to an exception to the the two hundred foot separation um for this one individual. Um, or which by all intents and purposes, and I know we we spoke of this in the original Town Board of Trustees hearings, is that generally, once you adopt a regulation, you do not make exceptions to the regulation. If you are going into moving on a regulation and adopting a regulation and you immediately move into, well, how can we make exceptions? The general rule of thumb is then that you don't move forward with that regulation, that that is not a valuable regulation.
Thanks. Um, for quick some more, was this noted as a public hearing tonight?
Mayor Karrespek, this is noted on the agenda as an introduction.
Okay.
The public hearing would occur as planning manager Hillenbrand stated at the August twelfth Board of Trustees meeting.
Great. Thank you. So this is an informational. Other questions for staff? Has there been consideration instead of a setback or a yeah setback? Or these multi units or or planner Hillenbrand from your experience with Lammert County and elsewhere, um, how would it work if we instead looked at a percentage of a unit? So if it's a fourplex, we could say twenty five percent, which would be one of those Eplex two type thing.
Yeah, um, that's a great question. Uh, so separation requirements, like I said, do come with their challenges. Oftentimes um, it can appear arbitrary, whatever may be selected. So truly, the the decision on two hundred over five hundred was based upon preference of the Town Board and Planning Commission. And again, it would go back to the same with the percentages. However, I do believe that percentages would be slightly more difficult to enforce and to manage. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that would look mapping and how there would I would think there might, there's going to be conflict.
Is there? Okay.
And challenges. And I think a lot, a lot of people would question, is it fair? Is it equitable? Um, and and I think that's again what we see here with separation requirements. That is a question ongoing. Is this fair and equitable? Um, and I I think it's looking at both sides of the perspective uh from short term rental operators as well as the neighbors who don't operate a short term rental, who do live in a residential community and how this also impacts them. So based upon my experience and and through, I think, our own discussions um like late last year is that this is one of those harder regulations um and management and it is, I don't think there is any one correct solution that's going to please everyone.
Certainly. Okay.
What has happened since we've approved our own guidelines for SDRs? How has that changed or affected the metro districts that were actually having their own application process? Has there been some cooperation with the town and all that? Because they can essentially go in and say, well, we're gonna keep the two hundred foot requirement in our neighborhood with our own application process. So how has that changed at all?
Absolutely. So metro districts or HOAs could establish their own regulations that are more restrictive than the town's regulations. So you're correct. If they wanted to uh maintain the two hundred foot separation and say, we you all decided that we wanted to go ahead and remove it, they could continue to per their own regulations, their covenants or their requirements, and that's that separation requirement. And they certainly could do that. Um, as of since we've adopted the regulations, uh, we haven't had any issues uh with HOAs or metro districts and all of our applicants are required to provide, if they do have a metro district or HOA, they're required to provide a letter um indicating that it is allowed within the HOA or metro district and we've had no issues with that thus far. Um, and it is to the best of my knowledge in Herring Lakes with the metro district, it is this one portion of the metro district for the town homes specifically that allows short term rentals per their requirements. Um, otherwise, anywhere else in Herring Lakes, to the best of my knowledge, they do not allow short term rentals.
With this being an informational meeting, if there are those people in the neighbor in those neighborhoods, they have time to at least go to their metro district boards, probably to try and encourage them to keep this if they don't want to have us remove it.
Potentially, yes.
Thinking of the areas that aren't inside an HOA or a metro district, I can think of very few examples in Old Town or or just areas without HOAs that have multi unit. To be fair, okay. We're looking at, we're calling town homes multi unit or not?
Um, yeah.
We are? Okay.
Town homes, yes.
Okay, well then there's no, it has an HOA too. And Hamilton Park can't because those are restricted to low income. Just trying to think who else this would affect, but I can't go to their HOA.
They've got a small HOA, but those new fourplexes over
At the gateway?
North, yeah, over by Gateway.
Yeah, I think that's an HOA though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just areas without an HOA that wouldn't have a chance to go to their governing board and petition for regulation. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for?
Just a quick point of clarification and this might because I'm tired and so I'm trying to remember the verbiage. Are we, is the suggested code update stating there would be no limit? Like there's no
Yes.
Two hundred buffer, there's no buffer at all?
Correct. So the based upon the feedback we have received, we went ahead and the proposal is to remove that requirement outright.
And so is it okay to discuss at this time an alternative?
Absolutely.
Said, yeah, it doesn't seem like it needs to be all or nothing.
And and I guess one thing too to to clarify, because it did come up in previous conversations, there was converse discussion about potentially requiring a unique separation requirements based upon housing type. So again, just as a reminder, um, so say, for instance, you did a, you know, fifty foot separation for town homes, but a single family, it was the two hundred feet or vice versa. Uh, again, that produces challenges um in that that may also appear arbitrary. And then justifying why is it that, say, a town home requires either a lesser restriction or a more significant restriction? And same with single family or paired homes. So that in itself creates challenges and again can be very difficult to manage or enforce.
Yeah, because if you have a town home next to a single family, it's like, do you measure fifty feet or do you measure two hundred?
Ex- exactly. Yes, there's always going to be those oddities for sure.
And the and the reality is, if it's fifty feet, there will be at some point there's a possibility that there's a short term rental that's forty nine feet away and and can't be approved under the fifty foot. And so, you know, I think there was a lot of discussion about the two hundred foot buffer and you know, kind of thinking about block length and you know how wide lots are. And there was some, there was a lot of consideration that went into that two hundred foot buffer that the board approved previously. And I think from staff's perspective, we feel like we should just stick to one buffer for all allowed housing types. It could be a it could be a smaller buffer if the board's comfortable with that. I I wouldn't have any issue with that. Um. Or that we have no buffer at all.
Okay.
And 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 of I I do think you probably all recall, I mean, even during the discussion, there was a lot, this was a big portion of the conversation.
Mm hmm.
I think we were recommending initially no buffer. There's a lot of good discussion about why buffer might make sense. We ultimately settled on two hundred feet or the Town Board ultimately settled settled on two hundred feet. And so we've stuck to that.
Reading the the one complaint or letter from citizens was the number of people in the parking situation, right? I think even it's come up at there, there was a short term rental in Herring Lakes in the house, single family section. And, you know, fifty people were showing up to a have a meeting or a party or whatever, right? And I think that that also onus needs to be put on to the homeowner to you know, I've stayed in Airbnbs where it's like absolutely no more than two people and you're not allowed to have parties and you know, that that's the difficulty in this is like we're trying to shape the the property owner's behavior, but at the end of the day, they're trying to make money or pay their mortgage or whatever they're doing. So I agree. It's like no matter what restrictions we put on, it's gonna be always gonna ask for an exception. It's difficult.
Well, that is in our guidelines, right? That they can't have meetings or events.
So they, yes, uh, in our regulations, you cannot have events. Um, and we also have regulations that uh limit the maximum number of guests that you can have in any one short term rental. It is limited to one short term rental per property. Uh, we also have parking requirements and it's based upon the number of bedrooms, I believe. Yeah.
Or the or if there's not enough available parking, it limits the maximum number of guests. It's kind of whichever is more restrictive.
And I can see, I actually lived in those townhomes at one point. Parking is a premium in there.
Yeah, the board, if there's not questions, would the board mind if we heard from one that did sign up under? Okay, then we can bring it back to you. Anything else for staff right now? You can be a little more flexible not being a public hearing. Okay, thank you right now. Uh, Mr. Hughes, you did sign up. Um, if you would like to come up, this would be the time. And if, uh, if you could state your name, name and address, uh, up here at the podium and then, uh, if you keep the comments to three minutes or less, like everyone, thank you very much.
Yes. Hi, uh, my, I'm Dane Hughes, uh, 1520 Hareville Street in Herring Lakes. I get, first of all, I'd, I'd like to thank all of you for having the discussion to even bring this up. That's something that we can, you know, that, that you could potentially discuss, uh, in the first place. As you, as you all know, I, I sent some emails over the last several months. And, uh, you know, you guys have already mentioned. Anyway, I just wanted to, um, clarify a few things. So as a local business owner, um, and a long-time birthed resident, I'd like to respectfully clarify a point, um, in the agenda item regarding short-term rental separation requirements. You know, that you, uh, that it had mentioned, uh, that I had requested or not necessarily me, but one person had requested. Let's see. Opposing the separation requirement and requesting its removal. And I just wanted to reiterate that that's not exactly what I had requested. I realize that that's what has been proposed. Um, and that's obviously it's up, up to the planning committee and up to the, to the board as to what it is that, you know, is reasonable. I just wanted to reiterate that, um, my argument was, um, actually the, the first, the first one that, you know, that you were talking about exceptions. I completely realize, you know, that granting an exception to an individual after you already have guidelines. It's not something that, you know, that not, not something that the town can really do without it being just a complete firestorm, right? So I, I, I understand that part, but, um, basically what I had been requesting was modifying the requirement to allow established responsible short-term rentals like myself to continue operating. And then, um, a third one would be, uh, make an amendment to reduce, you guys were just talking about to reduce the distance requirement. You know, possibly down to, for instance, 150 feet in those particular townhomes. As I think most of you know, the, uh, the bylaws at, at those townhomes from the very beginning stated that short-term rentals were allowed. And then I was the, the first person that started operating as a short-term rental out there. I think there was two fourplexes or three four, fourplexes at the time.
Mr. Hughes, we are actually past the three-minute mark, but I'll allow you, if you've got bullet points, you just list them off real quick.
Okay, yeah.
No explanation needed, but.
Sure. Anyway, ours is currently, um, approximately 170 feet in that range from the next permitted rental. You know, that making that an exception sort of thing is, or changing it to 150 for those particular townhomes, um, that are already considered to be short-term rentable from the bylaws. So it's been licensed under the metro district and operated since 2020, the first of its kind.
Did you have any other?
Yeah. I guess that's all. I don't want, I don't want to take up.
I just want to be clear, everyone. Usually we go to three. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you wish to speak? Though there's no sign up, it's all right if you wish to speak. Okay. If you could state your name and address and keep.
Yeah, it's, um, Mindy Cruz, um, 1520 Hareville. So he, uh, Dave explained a lot of, uh, what we had talked about. We were just talking about, um, how the, there was like eight or nine short-term rentals and it went down to four. And it's caused a problem, a hardship for people to own them because there's currently like four or five of them up for sale. And that's, it's been difficult to try to sell. Also, we've looked into long-term renters and we've not had a lot of success with that. There's a few that are doing that. So, um, we just believe that you're, um, not getting the revenue from, that you could get from visitors and from operators of these short-term rentals that would help the city with the costs. Also, those townhomes, the HOA has rose by 30%. The taxes have went up. So just try and to afford those townhomes. A long-term rental just doesn't really pay for all of that. So, so again, we're not asking, um, for to get rid of it, but we are asking just particularly for townhomes to maybe, since they are in blocks to like somebody mentioned, do one or lower to, you know, 100, 150, whatever the board deems, um, appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishes to speak to this that did not sign up? Okay, uh, back to the board here. Uh, any, go ahead, Mayor Purtem.
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, any, any comments right now? Any thoughts, questions of staff?
I've lost.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask a? Okay. So with, uh, your average Stone Seed apartment, how many rooms are in that? We know? Is that Stone Seed we were talking about that most of these are applying? Is this the front here, Herring Lakes apartment complex?
So this would be the Herring Lakes townhomes, uh, that are off Grand Market.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's Stone Seed. Okay. How many, do you know how many, uh, apartments or rooms in, are in average in there? I mean, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is this, uh, four-bedroom or one or two-bedroom, like three-bedroom?
Probably two to three.
Yeah, I want to say they're on average three.
Three, okay.
Some instances, I could quickly pull up our, some of our approved short-term rental, um, plans to take a look. But I think on average they're three, some have four.
Okay.
Like when they have, I think, yes, I believe.
Okay, thanks. That's fine. I need you to look that up. I was just, I was wondering if they're mourning too. Okay. Other questions?
Sorry, just an answer to your question. There are four currently listed for sale. Three have three bedrooms, one has four.
Yeah, my thought process with this is choose a party, three might be more of a crowd, but, uh, you know, you're not going to have a, a party if it's just one person in one bedroom. If one bedroom or two bedroom, I think you're just there to spend the night. So I wouldn't be worried about noise, but as soon as we get more and more bedrooms. Party is the wrong word. A get-together is what I meant. Okay, is there a mayor, uh, does y'all read?
I, I appreciated your comment about the percentage because I never thought it was fair or equitable to use distance as a measure for townhomes because they're just not spaced the way houses are. Like they're all differently built and there's different amounts of units in each one. It never seemed equitable to use the distance measure on townhomes anyway. And so I would submit that we use a percentage. Like, for example, if it was an even number of townhomes or multi-units that we, 25% of them could be used for SDRs, or if it's an uneven number, a third. And you could have a percentage or even we map out those units we have in town and say this, based on those kind of parameters, this is how many per each unit that we know of in town. That way it's not subjective to each applicant. We just identify, okay, the ones at Herring Lakes have eight units and only 25% of that would be a certain amount. And so anyone who applies, um, as long as it's within that amount. Cause if you had two units in an eight-unit complex, it wouldn't seem overkill. But if it's the distance, we're applying the distance, you've got one unit able to be used. And my thinking on this too, is coming from the city of Loveland's Economic Development Tourism Department. Their entire tourism budget and entire, that entire department was funded on SDRs. And they made a million dollars a year on SDRs and they had no regulations, zero on SDRs. And there was never any issues. I think Berthick is doing the right thing by having regulations because it's showing protection over homeowners that do live here and value our community. And so I think we've done the safety thing. Now we need to do the, how do we honor residents that want to come, want to bring family to town to attend our local events? Or visitors who want to come to TPC and, and then spend money in our community? And how do we create more opportunities for STRs? So that's, I think we do need to talk about lowering the, the limit on how far they need to be separated. Um, and change the values we're using for, um, the multi-unit areas. If that makes any sense.
Was the reason that it wasn't given because we had hit the cap, the total number? Or was it another reason? Or was it the 200-foot rule?
So you mean, um, sorry for clarification, why his application wasn't?
Yes.
It was the 200-foot separation.
So, so I, when he got up and spoke, he kept asking for small, shorter distances. Got it. Sorry, bell just went off.
Yeah. So his particular property is, yeah, falling short.
Yep, 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 yep. Got it.
Were the other ones that were not approved, they're same, similar? Yeah. I mean, you don't have to look this up too, but off the top of your head, how far apart were they, some of them? The closest ones, let's say.
Um, yeah, off the top of my head, unfortunately I don't recall. And now that we're, we're going on to a year and I haven't looked down on my.
Aren't there four or five buildings in this area we're talking about? Actual separate buildings, blocks? They're not all connected. And how many buildings?
There's, yeah. Eighteen or twenty, yeah.
Not, not units, but buildings. There's, there's like 18 buildings? And so almost by definition, the, one on an end of this building and one on an end of this building would be over 200 feet apart, correct? Is it, is the problem because they're all in the same building?
They'd have to be at opposite ends.
No.
No, exactly.
Yeah, opposite end, right. Yeah, if they were at opposite ends.
Okay, hold on. Well, you gotta keep this to the board and staff. Thank you. It's okay.
But you see what I'm saying here is just, I'm, I'm, I'm having this 200 feet in my head. And I, and I know we've got 18 different buildings. You would think that if it, the four were dispersed even just a little bit, you'd have 200 feet, but.
So trustee wing to provide some clarification. So even if the four units within one of those blocks of four townhomes, truly that two end caps could not, they would not meet the 200-foot separation. It would have to be one in that four unit block and then potentially one in the.
Exactly, exactly. But since four of them are falling under this criteria of the 200-foot rule, it would appear as though they're not spread out in the 18 different buildings. They must be somewhat concentrated.
No, I think they're, they're pretty.
Really?
Yeah.
Some of those are.
And it's not.
Right.
Yeah, and they're, you know, it depends on where the buildings are and how they're laid out, you know, you know, some of them are next to a park, so they're
Right.
much farther separated. Some are all right in a line. Uh, the ones on, um, Grand Market have a little more separation between them. There's some on Stone Seed where those four buildings are much closer together. It all just kind of lays out a little differently.
All right, that's, I'm good.
And I think, you know, when we think about this in the context of, um, of this particular project, there are no other homes around it today, right? You've got the, kind of the driving range to the west, southwest, and then you've got, you know, commercial development to the east. You know, there's a fairly large separation from the homes that will ultimately build up and be built on the north side of Grand Market. But you think about townhomes in different parts of town. In areas like Heritage Ridge, uh, that were built by, by Black Timber, they are literally right across the street from single-family and there are townhome buildings that are, that share a fence line with single-family. And so that's where it gets tricky in saying, you know, town, I, townhomes are a different product. They are denser, obviously. You know, you might have eight units in 200 feet, whereas like in a detached, single-family might have four units in 200.
Right.
But it depends on their location and what's around them. Um, and, and that, that changes the nature of that conversation a little bit too. And, and then do you choose a more restrictive, uh, boundary or, or separation when they're adjacent to single-family homes? You know, I, I think, I think what we start to struggle with at the staff level is that we start to try to create a regulation that fits in every single part of town. That never happens. And so it's either kind of one standard for everybody or no standard for everybody. That, that's our position. We, I think we certainly understand all the comments that have been made and I think we could make a lot of the same arguments, uh, and, and, and do that honestly, but from a practical regulatory standpoint, one standard is, um, kind of fair and easy to manage and, or, or no standard for separation. Uh, but trying to determine what's an appropriate separation in, you know, 18 different situations around town. There will be problems no matter what you do. If you try to create multiple standards based on.
Yeah, I mean, even with the 200-foot standard, it's, you're still getting complaints about too many people, too much traffic. So like.
You're gonna get complaints regardless, I think.
Mr. to Kirk's point, I, I think something, the other element to consider when debating if you reduce or increase separation requirement is that by reducing, um, again, there would need to be a significant amount of evaluation to determine if you go about doing, say, a percentage. What's appropriate in 18 fourplexes compared to, you know, I'm looking at Fickle Farm and their townhome configuration. As Chris pointed out, it, it's very different. And so what percentage is appropriate here obviously won't be appropriate. But again, it's going back to when you evaluate and you make a determination. Also understanding and reasoning. If you're saying it's okay to have a higher density in townhomes, I think the question is, then why do you feel that way? And I think there needs to be justification why it's more appropriate to have a higher density in townhomes, but not in single-family residential. I think there needs to be for the community a clear reason or justification as to why you're making that decision. So, and so why is it that community members who live in a townhome don't deserve the same type of treatment as somebody who's in a single-family residential? So I think that is part of this conundrum and the difficulty of making this decision, but I would ask that you also consider that while you're making your decision.
Hey, thank you.
And I'll add one more, if I may, thing to consider and, and, you know, we're not asking you to formally make this decision tonight, but I think this discussion is important if we want to make some changes to the ordinance before it's brought back. You know, the, the cottage, uh, homes like in Prairie Star are probably equally as dense as townhomes. Um, and so i- is it appropriate in the cottage homes or would the expectation be that those where they're, you know, 900 to 1100 square feet on 3,500 square foot lots? Is it a density question? Because they're probably just as dense as the townhomes. Or is it a detached, single-family? Because those are technically the cottages or detached, single-families. So they would be in that 200-foot buffer requirement if you said, hey, townhomes or attached product has a different setback requirement. So you know, again, I think that's, that's just all part of the conversation. And I know we wrestled with this when we went through this process. So, you know, I think we're having a lot of that same, you know, struggle to, to decide what's appropriate.
Well, I, I want to thank staff for helping us understand that from your perspective, because we're not in it every day like you guys. And that makes a lot of sense that it's hard to justify because of the different products that we have. So thank you. That does make a lot of sense to me. It makes me think that a less, um, less feet between homes would be more applicable. That way it can be indiscriminate, like 50 feet or 100 feet. Um, to reduce that so that we, that we can make allowance for, for more to take place, but not in, you know, in an inappropriate fashion by. In an inappropriate fashion by removing it entirely, I don't recommend removing the, the buffer at all. But I do think that we should consider reducing it so that there can be more opportunity.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be a little inequity no matter what, it's just a matter of distance of your lot too. You brought it up kind of with Prairie Star, so if a single-family is with a smaller lot. Not, though they're all single-family, if you have a, develop with larger lots, that's gonna be less that can use it versus. You could have more. In one area than you could, I guess, with smaller units. This is late, I don't know if that makes sense, but it, just thought I had an epiphany, but maybe not.
If you think about, if you think about the separation requirement, if it's two-hundred feet, it doesn't matter how many lots are in between. You're gonna end up with the same number, right? That could be kind of practically distributed around town regardless of density, so. That two-hundred-foot requirement, whether there's eight homes between two-hundred feet, or whether there's four homes between two-hundred feet or two homes. It, it won't make any difference, you still kind of practically have a restriction on how many can totally be.
Yes, per geographic area, that makes sense.
Per geographic area.
So what I would say, I guess more so is you have more uh, no STRs and, and smaller units, more areas. Yeah, you'd have, uh, if you're in a dense Prairie Star, um, Mission Homes Development. You have a lot more homes and fewer opportunities for a short-term rental than you were if you say Harvest Ridge.
I would agree that that's true, uh, you know, you likely within two-hundred feet in, in Prairie Star, I think there's probably eight. Units, right? Two-hundred feet, there's probably eight units in the townhomes, within two-hundred feet in Heritage Ridge, there's probably three houses, and so. You know, you could have one short-term rental per three houses in Heritage Ridge. You could have one short-term rental per eight units in townhomes or uh, in cottages. But again, practically speaking from a geographic perspective, they're all still two-hundred feet apart.
I, I think ultimately your point's right, I wasn't thinking like that, um, okay.
Well, I like to kind of express an opinion here as to why we're here. We're here because we had a whole bunch of, what, thirty-some units before we shut them all down?
Thirty-two, maybe, something like that.
And we had one unit that blew up the deal for everybody, in my opinion. Seemed like, it was just the one house that kind of spoiled it for everybody. So Tony brought us what she had from the county, a whole bunch of toppings for a pizza. Much different regulations and we just piled them all on. Before we had no regulations, I think we operated pretty fairly, pretty okay, with there wasn't a lot of complaints from what I could understand. Except for this one house, so to me, the two-hundred-foot set mark is just one topping on the pizza we could get rid of and it wouldn't change the flavor, so. My feeling is just get rid of it and make one less regulation for the staff to deal with. Um, if those neighborhoods want to increase and put back a two-hundred-foot setback or a hundred-foot setback. We leave that up to the metro districts that have to deal with that situation, but really, I don't see the, the, what we've had. The reason why we're putting all these regulations in the place is to hopefully offset the complaints and the problems that we had, and we didn't have that many. So why are we piling so many, so much regulation onto something that we didn't really have that big of an issue with? So to remove this two-hundred-foot regulation, I don't think it's gonna change how we operate. And it's, it's gonna not matter if you have two-hundred-foot or five-hundred-foot, if someone lives next to an STR. They're gonna complain about it, they don't want it next door, it's, don't want it in your backyard, there's gonna be complaints either way. So to me, it doesn't matter if, if they're next, right next door to each other because someone owns two units. Or if they're four or five units apart, there's gonna be those that just don't want it on their street, they don't want it in their neighborhood. And the two-hundred-foot minimum's not gonna fix that. Well, that's just my opinion, two cents of why I think we should just remove it, it's just one too many toppings.
Just a little bit, and I totally appreciate what you said though, because I agree that. We went from one big blow-up to an entire regulation that's taken, taken up a lot of time and energy and. Um, it might be overdone, the only reason why I think any setback would be important to keep in place is just because we don't want. For our current residents to live on an entire street of STRs. All of their neighbors be STRs, like if they, you know, it wouldn't probably not be wonderful to live next to. One, if that's not, you're, you're not interested in that, but if you live next to an entire block of them, that would be. That would change how Berthick feels to you entirely, and so I think that's where I would just argue maybe have some setback. Um, just to prevent an entire block from becoming rentals and then we have, are edged out of all of our livable homes, but. So maybe somewhere in between there.
But that's where I'm putting this, that issue onto our metro districts, which are their own governing, for their own neighborhoods. I think as a town, we should have kind of the basic crust of things. And then if someone in a certain neighborhood wants to be more restrictive, then we should allow them to be more restrictive. Like, you know, having a gated community or not, but that's a whole other topic, um, so.
Are you suggesting that the town itself has regulations and setbacks, but not for metro districts, that they choose that for themselves?
I think metro districts should be able to govern themselves like they are assigned to, because that's what they want to do. But I think we need to keep kind of the basics, since we're gonna be basically operating it from a minimum part of it.
That's a good clarification, so as a metro district, as a governing, they have the ability to make.
They can put their own two-hundred-foot or five-hundred-foot.
Right, that's just law, right?
I, I do think, I, I do think that you, that you have to remember that there's a whole lot of neighborhoods in town that don't have HOAs or metro districts. And so if you remove that buffer, then you are the HOA or metro des- metro district for those neighborhoods.
The ones in town are much more sparse than the ones that are in the new neighborhoods where they're buying and selling up new townhomes and. Those product types that are more desirable for um, to be a, an Airbnb or VRBO.
And I, I think it's tough because, you know, we, we create regulation for the what-if, right? And, and we're never gonna capture every what-if. But I do think that, you know, when we look at it through the lens of like, what, what's kind of, what's best for the most people? And kind of what's most fairly applied regardless of who or how old your home is or what neighborhood you live in. I think that's important for us to consider, so just to offer that as a, as a thought.
Certainly.
Well, since we're here, let's just mandate that the whole town has their own HOA.
I love not having. My, my, okay, I, I just want, my, my view would be more aligned with trustee Albrecht now, I, I think these. I like trustee Hardy and Albrecht, the thought, that thought process, I like uh, trustee Albrecht's a little bit more. I do worry about, I've heard several times that Heron Point itself has a lot of, of, not short-term rentals, but just renters. So um, that means the owners aren't living, necessarily living in town, likely not. So I don't know how that works with HOAs, um, but you could have people on an HOA board that don't actually live there, but they are property owners. Um, their viewpoint might be more commercial than quality of life for residents, I have heard that, that, luckily, my neighbors are all. Residents and, and live on their own properties, but um, that does affect in a community when you have a lot of renters, and uh, I think your points are great, that.
But we have so much more regulation on short-term rentals than, and we don't have any regulation on long-term rentals, do we?
No, we don't.
No, so my, I'm not talking about, yeah, I'm just making the reference that.
And you get kind of the same complaints, it's like, gosh, I don't know who's gonna be living there next month. Versus, I'm not gonna, I'm not sure who's gonna be there next week, it's, it's very similar to me and, and why we stack all these regulations on short-term rentals, but not on long-term rentals.
I would make an argument, I, I, uh, tired again, but that, the use of a, a short-term rental. You'd probably be a little less concerned of what your neighbor's feelings are, because they'll be out in a couple days than you would if you're in a, in a longer lease.
Cause I've heard people say, I'd rather have a short-term rental next to me because I know those people are gonna be gone in two nights. Versus someone that's gonna be stuck in there for thirty days and then I have to get the sheriff's department to go give an eviction notice and. Go through the whole process of trying to evict someone out of a long-term rental. To me, I think long-term rentals are more, would be more of a hassle problem of having an undesirable next to you than a short-term rental is. Why are we regulating short-term rentals so much more?
Mayor Karstek.
Yes, please.
Provide clarification, so to be clear, short-term rentals are considered a commercial operation.
Yeah.
Um, because you are gaining income through a short-term rental. Um, however, long-term renting, um, again, is, is providing housing opportunity for your, your local. Working staff, your, you, you know, your local fire uh, department personnel or town staff or. Um, so they are treated very differently, um, but short-term rentals, to be clear, are a commercial operation.
Yeah, I understand that.
And of course, keeping in mind is that we don't adopt land use regulations to manage complaints or concerns in that regard. We adopt short, land use regulations to protect the health, safety and welfare of our community. As well as the fabrics of our community and what is being, um, what is valued by the community. And it's, again, going back to the, you know, the small uh, town charm and what is, has been established. Is what we value as a community and our comprehensive plan, and so that is why we adopt regulations. So that we can ensure uh, the longevity of our community and the value of our community in the long haul.
Thank you, I, I guess just to, uh, thank you for this, I would just go with Mays, um, and I'd like to add it as a hundred feet. Uh, but that way you're not stacked with potentially another situation that was, but you have a bunch in one, one area.
If I could maybe add one comment, I'll try and be brief. We're not even a year into this policy, um, I haven't heard a lot of issues from constituents. Um, with our policy, most people I've heard from appreciate the setback, whether they agree with the two-hundred or not. I think, I, I would honestly like to see a lot more data, I would like to see this policy in effect for a lot longer. Before we make any modifications or changes to it at this point. And, and the last point is, uh, we are the functioning regulatory body for. The rest of town outside of metros and HOAs, and I think that's really important to consider. What those folks want and what kind of quality of life we're maintaining with things like the setback for STRs. So, um, I would just like us to keep those things in mind as we go forward.
Yeah, I think the, the Heron Lakes, townhomes in Heron Lakes is a unique situation because. It's a destination for golfers and there is not a hotel or another alternative. Um, you know, like for example, when the corn fairy was here, where do all the players and caddies stay? They don't go to hotel, the, the residents open up their homes and let them stay for free. So I think as that tournament grows and the course grows, it's just gonna continue to be, it's really the only solution up there. Yeah, I know there was a single-family residence that was a sore spot, um, but. Metro needs to also step up and do their job, you know, to some degree, because they're, they're, I'm sure selling those properties. Or initially were selling those properties of, well, hey, you know, there's gonna be an opportunity here for short-term rentals, you know? And so that's in all fairness to the people that are buying these homes. That the metro needs to step up as well, and I don't know if we have the ability to, I don't think we can regulate the metro districts.
You can't force them to increase their rules. Yeah, like people come here, they, they buy the house, they live there six months out of the year and for the summer, and then they go winter in Florida for the other six months.
The Chandler Thinks guy, um, he stayed in, don't, um, Grand Market once. I know Sarah, uh, that does the concert, she complained to the board about this sort of in the first year that they sent their artists. Last year was the first year, they had to send their artists out of town, uh, because there was no room.
We didn't allow them.
Sorry, didn't allow them, yeah, um.
For what it's worth, I have heard a lot of negative comments from those who were currently operating STRs that had to close down and. They abandoned the notion of working in Berthick, most of them, and didn't even apply, or they applied and were frustrated. And that's not a discredit to the staff's process, it's just to let us know and remember that this, this greatly affected the people. That were doing this and wanting to do it fairly and legally, and it's gonna be really hard to regain that. Community drive to want to offer amazing lawful, you know, very like. Community-centric places for people to stay again, if we don't give them some more liberty. And we did talk about bringing this back to us within six months and it has, that it was delayed in coming back to us. So I think there was a desire from the board to talk about this at this time and review what was working or not working. And I think this adjustment isn't, would help with the townhomes and would help with maybe some more opportunities in the community.
A good perspective there. Personally, I, and I don't want to offend, uh, I'm looking at this less as for the owners, which I do believe, I agree with you, we're kind of caught off guard. But more so, uh, for the community, um, and I, I guess primarily I'm looking at this that we do lack right now lodging. If we were able to reduce, we'd have a little bit more, but still wouldn't allow it back-to-back. And knowing that where these ones particularly, we have an issue right now, um, their metro could step in. And uh, do whatever they want to make it more restrictive.
It's not where they're at, just for your information. It's the opposite.
Do they have a voice in that, do, does Stone Seed, or is it just whoever shows up? They don't do like by district, right, the metro?
I mean, that would be a matter of covenants. So covenants usually require some sort of supermajority in order to amend them. It's not a metro district issue per se, it's a covenant issue, that's usually a homeowner's association. Although some metro districts also.
Although also some metro districts are um, charged with that sort of covenant control.
Okay, thank you. To your point, um, right now, the only townhouses are in one district.
Okay, one district, right. Okay, so if we didn't anything, we wouldn't have a second reading on this, right? If we decided to keep where we're at with two-hundred?
You could direct us tonight not to bring it back to you, that's fine.
Right, and I guess for the board's consideration too, if we do type that, do zero or some kind of in-between, there's still an opportunity. At the second reading to vote no, I guess. I don't know, it's a little strange, but um, because it's an opportunity to think about it a little bit more.
Yep, that's, that's very true, and you're also not obligated to approve it at the second reading. So if you have some time to think about it, you can deny it, or you can ask it to be revised and brought back a third time. Uh, there's no, you know.
Right.
You're, you're not obligated to make a change or to keep it the same, I mean, you, you know. Duty of the legislative regulatory processes, you can make that choice when, when you want.
Okay, thanks.
If I may, Mayor Karstek, thank you, so, so what you're seeing before you is planning commissions. Vote to deny removing that restriction, so that is what staff then presents to you. So if you want to change planning commission's recommendation, which they are recommending keeping it as is. Then staff would just need direction on what, what kind of information you'd like to see presented back to you. For your decision.
Well.
Or you just may wanna sleep on it.
Yeah, I guess we could always amend, we could just treat this as straight informational, I mean, was staff expecting a vote or?
This is intended to be an introduction, so.
Yeah, okay.
Statute doesn't require us to have two readings, but that's always been our practice, just so that it can be introduced, it can be discussed, it can be. Considered, and then we bring it back to you at a second reading with the intent that you make a decision at that point, uh, but you're also not obligated to. Approve or deny at that point.
Okay, any thoughts, Mayor Protem?
If I could, and I, I would suspect I'm not in the majority, but I would move to follow planning commission's direction. And deny this at a second hearing.
Um, well, if nothing else, we could just see, yeah, let's just go into a vote on that.
Do you have a second, Mayor Karstek?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, uh, just thinking if we, does everyone feel heard before we go to, to votes?
Help me understand what our vote is gonna signify.
So the vote is just essentially saying, um.
Status quo.
Status quo, and there wouldn't be a second reading on this.
Would you keep it the same?
You're keeping that two-hundred.
Is status quo or yes, vote is status quo?
Nothing would change.
Right, a no vote would mean bring this back to us a second time.
No is coming back, okay.
Yes is not coming back.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Alright, no second on that.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright, uh, we have a motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by um, trustee Wing. I guess this is not a voice vote, let's do this as a roll call vote, clerk.
What was the motion again?
Motion was to essentially keep the status quo, so two-hundred feet.
Go with what the planning commission said.
Second hearing.
Yep.
Remaining status quo.
Okay. Clerk, we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Albrecht?
No.
Trustee Wing?
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Brody?
No.
Trustee Hardy?
No.
Mayor Carspick?
No. Okay, so this will be coming back to us. Would anyone want to control how this comes back to us with a suggestion, or do we want to just kind of leave this and, and let it mull on this?
I, I would make a suggestion for the sake of make a suggestion. We, we can beat this subject to death for a long, long time. And it's phenomenally subjective, so my recommendation would be change it from two hundred to one hundred.
I would agree with that.
I would also agree with that. And I think if we have a number in place, then the feedback at our next meeting will be more directed toward that instead of all over the map.
Should we vote on that too? Anyone strongly opposed to that?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that we just eliminate the two hundred foot restriction altogether.
All right, well, let's vote on that then, so you feel heard. Clerk, we have a roll, okay, so the motion was to, um, kind of meet halfway and do a hundred foot setback. Is that correct? All right, so we have a motion and is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you make the motion?
You did.
No, I did not make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for a hundred foot setback.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, trustee, trustee, you almost got me there. Trustee Wing, uh, moved. Trustee Albrecht seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
No. No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes, so three, three on a six-person board, that, that, that fails, right?
It didn't pass.
Didn't pass and it didn't fail.
I think if you don't, so we, we have to go with.
Someone has to be flogged.
We have to go with the majority of, of trustees present, right? So it didn't pass, that's what, yeah, yeah. So we're going.
When Carl's here.
We're coming back with, uh, a very.
With the elimination of the two hundred foot setback.
Exactly what it started with, so. Okay, thank you. Well, this is informational, but this has been productive. I hope you don't think this was a waste of your time. Um, I certainly have a lot to think about, so. We all good? Okay. That concludes the regular agenda tonight.
Reports.
Uh, did we say ten fifteen?
Thirty.
Ten thirty.
Oh, man. All right, let's give it a shot. Uh, reports, let's start off with trustee Wing.
No.
All right, uh, trustee Hardy.
Um, did I have something for reports? Uh, just the request for an email that we received, how we handled that. And two, glad to see the correspondence and comments between Tony and Ann and, and Robert with the Deckard, with the short-term rental software. It's kind of interesting to see you guys interacting with that, so, but.
Yeah, we'll talk offline.
Talk offline, okay.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Brody, welcome.
That's a first one hour, all right.
All right, trustee Albrecht.
No reports. I was just gonna recommend that when we are extending our meetings, we could probably just vote to extend it without giving a hard time. I, I mean, unless you guys want to have a hard time that we send it to, so it keeps us under wraps, but it's okay, I think also to just say we'll vote to extend the meeting. We're not always extending and then extending and extending.
Thanks, thank you. All right, uh, Mayor Protem?
Uh, yeah, we had tree committee last night. Uh, just wanted to bring up, uh, we're on watch for EAB. Herbivorous furnace was very concerned. Uh, it may already be in town, even though we don't have a confirmed instance. So he is largely checking backyards and private homeowners because we've got ours under watch. Keep an eye out for D-shaped exit holes on any ash trees. Um, along with a new term I learned yesterday, epicormic growth, which is where basically most of the tree is dead. And it's because, uh, energy can't transfer through the tree stem or the trunk. And you have growth really coming out of the base as it tries to survive, so.
Kind of shrubbery.
Um, if you have any suspect like trees, please let Forester Furnace know. Otherwise, staff is largely going around town and doing, uh, kind of clearance pruning. That's all I've got.
Not done.
I'm sorry. Um, today was, um, here on Lakes, uh, metro district meeting. And one of the, um, strong things that came out of it was a residence of Vantage, um, strongly complaining about the parking for the fireworks. And they'd really like us to come up with a solution next year. And one person said their vehicle got shot with a gun. But, uh, kids were, kids were getting run into by cars and stuff like that. So anyhow, just FYI, it was.
For our fireworks or for the metro district fireworks?
No, ours.
Our July third.
Yeah.
Why did they come to you? You had a Heron Lakes meeting, Vantage came to you.
So Vantage is, Vantage is, is in our metro district.
Part of the birth of Heron Lakes metro district.
Why didn't they come to us? It's the town function.
Well, they were, they were, I think they were just bringing it up. Here's a concern for the metro district.
No, you're right.
So I said.
No, that's great. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Real quick, I, I, I would love to take the bus thing this weekend, but I couldn't, but my, uh, relatives, uh, were able to take that to Rockies game. And it was, they had the last two seats. They texted me when they got on, they were zat full. So they were along with another family of four, um, actually Alex Hoamy's family, that just happened to be at the same time. So, uh, it was kind of cool to watch the, uh, birthed resident step up to that and how crowded it is for the Rockies games. So my, my hope, my only suggestion would be to make that a little bit more welcoming. I know, um, there has been discussion about adding some kind of beautification projects to, to that area, um, so it's not so Spartan and kind of depressing. Um, but what an amazing sixteen million dollar feature for our community, um, that I would love to try and help attract more people to. And I think another thing to do is to add that to the bats' territory. So I'm, now I'm more and more involved in this transit committee. I understand how harder this can be. But I do think there's opportunities to expand our territory just to, um, even though I think that's a C dot area, not town annexed to that area and then to Serenity Ridge. Other than that, I just wanted to thank the town. I, of course, am not a parent, but with my sister moving to town, I'm an uncle of two in the community. And I so much appreciate the splash pad more than I would. I loved it regularly, but, oh my God, it's a life center. Uh, you parents, I don't know how you did it before that thing, but, um, I just take them straight there and they do what they want and it saves my life, so. My only question to staff and, uh, if you could, do we have any, um, solution or update on the fire pit there? Are that still able, when you rent that fire pit, do we, Keith was struggling with how to open it up to the public.
There are, uh, we did make some modifications and, uh, I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head.
That's all.
Uh, but I do know Keith's aware of that and they were working on some solutions, so.
Awesome, all right. Thank you, that's it. Turn it over to staff.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, uh, from a scheduling perspective. Just a reminder that we have a special meeting planned next Tuesday. That's normally our fifth Tuesday of the month. Um, and, and fifth Tuesdays historically have been study sessions or special meetings anyways. Um, but this one is to, to cover the Harvest West annexation petition that was postponed from June. We'll also talk about the development code, uh, and the follow-up to all the outreach and meetings and tours and things we've done over the last year or two years. Uh, kind of what those code amendments may or may not look like. And then, um, as you hopefully have seen via your email, but our vector index is elevated for, uh, West Nile virus, the mosquito traps, our vector index was over one. And so that's, that's high, uh, it's much higher than Limerick County Health Department's recommendation. They recommend that we spray. Our policy is two weeks of point seven five or higher. Uh, and, and if that happens, then we'll bring that to you to consider. So on Monday, we'll get our data for this week. And so we may add that to the agenda for discussion, uh, for that special meeting if our vector eleva, uh, vector index is still elevated above point seven five.
We spray the whole town?
Uh, that'll be part of the conversation for the board to consider.
Hey.
Yep.
Oh, National Night Out, was that on the fifth?
Sorry, that's right here on my list. Uh, National Night Out, August fifth. Uh, we'll have a booth and a table available for, um, staff trustees at the event. Uh, if you want to be there, please, uh, join us. It's from three to six P M. At Town Park. It's gonna be really awesome. Uh, opportunity to connect with local law enforcement, the fire department will be there. Uh, we're gonna give out, you know, free hot dogs to the first five hundred people that show up. So it's, it's gonna be a fun, it's gonna be a fun night at the park.
What's the date?
August fifth, National Night Out, uh, three to six P M. At Town Park.
Or do it. Uh, clerk, I, just with this, I, I, I asked previously if I could extend an invite to sheriff. I didn't, and but deliberately I was just feeling maybe a little, if we could, the, the staff, uh, send an invite to the sheriff if there hasn't been already.
Certainly, we can go ahead and reach out.
Directly to Sheriff Fane.
Yeah, I, I don't know, you know, something's get lost in translation and maybe it never got to him, but.
I think that's totally appropriate. We can absolutely reach out and invite him.
Thank you. Awesome, anything else?
Nope.